So we've already seen first draft of the budget. Everyone's had time to look over it and mark them up and write down thoughts. So go ahead and Ted is here.
Sure.
Walk us through any big changes or anything.
So first, I kind of want to start off with a few highlights that might help you. You see on page one, last time we talked about future of Bel Air and where we're going, where we're heading and what we want to do. I kind of took from that discussion that sustaining fiscal stability might be one of our goals in every budget in Bel Air. That's why I kind of, the summary page says, in the general fund, our total expenditures would be around 5.8 million, 5.9 million. What I did there is just make sure that in 2023, we have 30% reserves available. Now, as we remember from our previous budget workshop, that means, you know, bare bones if we only grow 5% type of business, but the way I say it is, you know, that's the best available data we have, so let's use it and do 30% by 2023. So that's kind of what the total expenditure that I put on this budget. You guys are more than welcome. This is your budget, so you guys can operate whatever you want, but that's my opinion that we should probably look into the future and make sure we have that reserve because we have a little bit of market risk with our development. The next thing, highlight I have debt and land expenses are about 41% of our expenditures. Personnel is about 37%, and this is just highlights, so I'm not on any page.
Okay.
It's just my handwritten introduction. With personnel, you know, no new employees for 2019, a 2.5% step increase for all employees, and then maintain good health benefits with a 10% increase. That's how we maintain is to make sure, to put in that increase, just to make sure. Few news stories over the last couple, as we're just reading the Eagle and the federal government's, you know, suspending some payments. And anytime you hear, this is going to be bad for small businesses' health plans, that means us, just to let everybody know, because sometimes people think we're in a big government plan. No, we're a small business type plan, and everything that happens with anything you can imagine, it's going to happen to us. So 10% is probably, probably right there, but I wouldn't be too surprised if maybe it's a little more, but I'm hoping for 10. That leaves, that's about 78% of all of our expenses. There's debt, land expenses, and personnel. So what that, another 22%, what I did and we did in this budget proposal is, one, it gives employees tools to operate. That's whether it's contractual fuel for police cars or different things. And then the second thing that 22% does is funnel everything else in the street improvements and any project the council wishes to address. And we'll go through how I plan to show you guys exactly how you have set the priority on that type of spending. Not necessarily, we don't want to make major projects inside a three-hour budget workshop when we're trying to discuss most mainly operating expenditures and different things like that. So that's an overall highlight. We can go to page two, which is our revenues. On June 12th, county clerk sends their estimate, which all cities get an estimate from the county, what they think their assessed valuation will be for the next year. Ours went up 7.43%, which is really good. As you guys know, previous workshop, I usually put in five just to be on the safe spot. Well, we're growing 7.43, so that's really good. That's an extra almost $60,000. And it goes without saying, the mill Lebby's remains consistent with all the years I've been here, 45.72, 73, sorry. So basically, what property taxes make up, about 48% of all our revenues. The sales tax, county sales tax makes up 21%. All taxes make up about 70, 77% of all revenues. So taxes are very important, and that's why in my monthly reports, I kind of try to highlight where we're at in some of those different taxes. And Jim, or Councilmember Minaj, had a good question to me. Last monthly report was out and it said, hey, we're growing 9% in property taxes. Well, that's, yeah, and Jim hit probably right now in the heads, a lot of people probably didn't pay the half, they paid the full one so that they can take advantage of the federal tax legislation. But basically, my response to him is if you look at it and it doesn't, if it shows 3% growth, you know, well, we might get a little scared because we're expecting seven in the budget, but anything over seven, it's really just kind of, it might be an anomaly like that. So I just want to point that out, how to tie in our budget with what I report to you monthly. So all taxes are 4.4 million. Water, or I guess franchise fees is next. That's about 11% of our revenues. A lot of these are electric franchise, to use our easements. You guys all know that. One thing I did change was the water, the water utility is going to start contributing a hundred thousand, as you can tell, or see, that it hasn't been contributing at all for the last, I guess, 2016, 17, and about every year before that. In 2018, I'm going to try to do it. What happened in 2017 is we had a lot of different main breaks and that, I only have so much money in that fund, so what's going to suffer is the general. So this is more of a catch-up, and also, that's pretty much what water should, I mean, franchise fee is, to us, is kind of ties time, my time, that I'm not paid out of the water fund, but I can tell you, I've been doing a lot of work out of the water fund the last two months. So that's what that kind of does for us. Again, that's around 11, 11%.
That's really just paying ourselves from one bucket to a different bucket, right?
Exactly. Yep, yep, exactly. Fines and fees, I kind of have stagnant. In 2017, we kind of had a boom year on progression. We're at like 53% year-to-date on this year's budget, so I'm thinking that we're probably going to collect around the same as we are, 2018 budget for 2019. I think 2017 is an outlier, so that's about 3% of our budget revenues. Building fees I dropped, or building permits and licenses. Building permits I dropped a little bit, and that's mainly just tracking where we're at year-to-date. It fluctuates quite a bit. As you can see, in 2018, or 2016, we did 120,000, then we went down to 109. It's like betting on the housing market. It's kind of hard, so I tend to be a little more conservative on the building permits, so we're not expecting revenues that aren't going to be there. Again, that's 4.5% of all revenues is the permits and licensing.
Just a quick question about court fees and court costs. Jack, you reported, I think, at last council meeting that we've gained some efficiencies in the court system, and some of those fees are, will be reduced as a result of that. Is that a correct statement, or do we have any idea about that? If you're not, if you're not collecting fines, as many fines and such, is that true?
The efficiency to be focused on were reducing the number of people who come in and physically come to court. They're given other opportunities to pay the fines through other procedures, like email or negotiating prior to court. So I don't see those fines changing.
Shouldn't be changing these figures significantly.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The other efficiency on the expenditure side is that for a while, we had to run two, actually, three courts. Right now, we're running two. And so if we can get them more efficiently processed through a pain, so that everybody doesn't show up to pay a fine, they can pay it, you know, some other way or come in, then that cuts our court costs.
So it's cutting the cost, but not reducing the fines?
Exactly.
Okay.
That's where our efficiencies are.
Thank you.
And I guess I did make some notes on the side there. It's just really highlights, but on the administration fees, that's when we go to bond. For the next 20 years, I'm going to be getting calls, so we have a little fee when we bond for like a special assessment that recups the cost of all the work I spend on doing a lot of that work for that issue. So that's, that's what that is. Page three, the second half of revenues. Recreation and pool. Recreation, I kept relatively the same. We're trending nicely in 2018, but I just, I want to kind of see, see the end of the year before we adjust those revenues. That's about 1.2% of our revenues. Pool's about 0.7% of our revenues. As you know, we've had a good pool season. I pretty much kept those relatively the same. Increased facility rentals, we're getting a lot more of those this year, so not really too much worth talking. Grants, Department of Aging, I just drove to Sedwick County and dropped off our application for 2019 funding for $18,000. Last year, we thought we were going to get 38,000, and this county just decided not to, not to award those, so we just went for the 18,000. And then with the SRO PD officer, I called a grant. It's a, it's more of a agreement between us and 259 that they pay half of the salary of one of our officers, which is really nice. That's what, that's reflected in 2019 as well. Vess Pro, just talked a few, about a few of our grants. I put in an application about a month ago. I think we shouldn't hear in the next month or so, but usually, this is to help curb costs for both Vess for PD officers. We've been awarded it for a lot of years. Last year, we actually didn't have, so they track how many officers you have, how many vests they provided. We didn't have the right amount of officers versus vests, so we had to wait one year and then go. And then miscellaneous, about 1.2% of our revenues. These are just interest on investments, different, different small things that result. All in, 5.7 million in revenue for 2019. I think, sure.
Sorry. Go ahead. Just trivia question. Top of the column of 2017, it says adopted. Was that really actual? That's just a typo?
Yeah, that was a typo, and I must have changed it on mine, but not your guys', I'm sorry. All the, all the 20, all the 20.
I may be working as a copy.
It might be a few more, but all the, all the 2017s are actual, sorry.
I figured.
I know we planned to sell our old dump truck when we get our new one in. Would that be something that we have planned for as a revenue in 2019?
So what we've been, and this is kind of small equipment sales, something large like that will actually go in our equipment reserve under sale of equipment, so that it kind of feeds itself a little bit. We can do it in both ways. I think this is mainly, this is mainly scrap metal and a few maybe smaller things that we do. Because I think a couple of years back, we bought some PD vehicles, and we got some really good prices on our Tahos, and that kind of really supplemented the price of the PD vehicle, because we paid, you know, revenue and expense out of the same fund. Okay, page three would be the start of our expenditures. Administration is mainly, mainly personnel, city manager, city attorney, director of finance, city treasurer.
Pitch four.
Pitch, oh, four, I'm sorry. Sorry, Betty.
What? Okay, sorry.
This page's three, your page.
The administration budget's right at 12% of our budget. 11% of that is, is personnel. As I alluded to in the highlights, just a step increase for everybody, plus health and health insurance, plus 10%. And if you follow along, it might not seem like 10%, but it's kind of, I did two, I did two things in the administration budget. The director of communication, Tristan Tihern, is going to be funded out of administration instead of her community development fund. It's a little cleaner that way, as far as she's more part of the administration team, so we put her in with that. Another one, Stacy Cook, our city clerk, she is assistant planning and zoning, but a lot of her work is actually city clerk work, so I figured we should reflect that in our budget and have her under administration. So most of the increase that you see in that personnel side is from adding two employees to that fund. Anything else, you'll see contractuals, and this is where I kind of said, there's not a lot, you know, with 78% of our expenditures going to debt and land and personnel, everything else is pretty, pretty straightforward. Liability insurance, we got to hold it, and a lot of the contractuals, you'll see a theme, all of them will have liability insurance line. Communication services, that's internet and phone. And then utilities, that's to keep the lights on. The way I divide this is pretty much by employees, so how many employees does that, does that, does that fund have? And then we'll take that total bill, divide it, and that's kind of how that works. On the commodity side, basically, office supplies, pay for my pens and furniture and different trainings and conferences. The, the one thing here that last year, they moved to the administration side would be development resources, and we can have a conversation on that. In 2017, we bought all the banners with the development resource line and Christmas lights, different things in 2017. 2018 hasn't been decided yet. Ty said you might throw in the live meeting camera stuff, if that's something you guys want to tackle as well, if you like that, be on Facebook. That's with a question mark, but really, we come to you guys, and Ty can talk more about it, but I chose to remain, keep it in the budget, but you guys can have that conversation.
What are your thoughts on having that and coming out of the general fund as opposed to the community development fund?
So the way funds, really, all these, all these different departments within a fund, so it's all the same fund, it's just a department within a fund. That was a decision to put it under Ty last budget season. You can do either way. I think the way it mainly works is we only have so much spending authority, so anything we spend out of that line is going to come before council, because it's, it's probably going to be a little bigger ticket purchase. And so really, to me, it doesn't matter what department it's in, because it's all the same money and under the same general fund.
Yeah, it just looked like from 2018 forward, we stopped doing it in the old fund, or out of the community development fund, and started doing it out of the general fund, and I was just curious why?
Yeah, it was just a decision of the previous council to put it under administration.
And so I guess what are the implications of that? Just curious.
To me, not, not too much. It was more of, it was more of, this is kind of Ty's, Ty's department fund, I guess, our Ty's department budget, so they wanted it under Ty.
Okay, that's a tie, it's been the money and somebody else?
Exactly. Or, yeah, any, that's kind of tied. When I, when I distribute department budgets to all my departments, I give Ty the administration one, and basically all of them, but that's the one Ty and I kind of watch.
And that would be something like, that's what we have the notes here, Ted does, is Tristan has, you've noticed she's been here doing Facebook Live, and we've been doing it kind of rudimentary with her cell phone and, you know, taped things. She's actually researching what it would cost to do that through actual equipment. And the great thing is that both Andover and Derby are also looking at it, so she's been meeting with them to determine, because we all have the same type of equipment and stuff, and so, so she's working on what a cost of that would be. And it looks like, you know, we could be in the neighborhood of $6,000 roughly. Now, that's not just Facebook Live, that would be, we could also live broadcast on the cable channel as well. So, and so we wanted to just see, that's why she started doing it with her phone, just see if we had people interested. And there were people watching it on Facebook Live, you know, because a lot of people don't have cable anymore. That's our free resource. And so that's why she's been researching it, and she'll bring back some numbers for you later this year about what it would cost, what we got to do, an equipment upgrade to do all that live stream. So that's, you know, that, we could take that out of there.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, and that's, you know, we had that earlier, that's something I think all of us would like, you know, more communication. We talked about, because we're on Cox communication right now, was there any conversation, or can we find out too what it would be? What are the other providers? There's AT&amp;T, Cox.
Directing, Dish Network.
Yeah, Direct and Dish.
They'll be direct us in detail.
I think, yeah, one of those is connected with AT&amp;T, I think.
Yeah, yeah. No, Cox is the only one that provides us with a channel.
Channel.
And they basically told, because we talked to them about, can we do some improvements to it? And they said that the channel they give us, quickly enough to pay for it, does not have HDTV, and they are not going to spend any upgrades on it, because, you know, every city has one channel, and that's all they're going to do. And so if we want to do, have better live streaming, better HD, that kind of stuff, we're going to have to do some equipment upgrades and do it via our website and Facebook Live, that type of stuff.
Have we had any discussions with them? And I know they have a lot of hyper-optic lines in government now.
Yeah, they, they don't have a dedicated line for government use, so that's the issue we've had with them. So, because you know Cox will do the UST 259 and us, and AT&amp;T doesn't, or either of us. So.
There's any more questions on administration department?
It's, and it's broader than just administration, but this health insurance, because you keep bringing it up, and I'm just, I'm curious as to if we've looked at other options. It's kind of a small organization to do it, but, but I actually moved an organization into self-insured. It was a fairly small organization. There's more risk with it, and you do that, but it's, it can save a lot of money if it works. And I don't know if we looked.
I looked hard at that, and then that's kind of, that's the administration part of my job, and the one hard thing with that, Valley Center, just went to that a couple of years ago. I love the concept and the idea. We gained two employees that decided to take our Blue Cross Blue Shield, even though there probably has competitive benefits, but just because it wasn't being recognized.
Really?
It's, it's an interesting psychological thing that employees have when they think they have really good insurance, which we do give good insurance, but if it has the City of Bel Air insurance card versus Blue Cross Blue Shield insurance card, they might think it's less. I'm not saying that's, that's the reason I turned it down, the more of the administration part of the pool and making sure we have enough saved, that would be a real commitment to the city council to make sure we keep that funded, because a lot of cities, what happens is if maybe they see their pools at a, is at a strong level, one year, they'll stop contributing to it. And then you'd have to have really strong regards, because I think the city of Latha, or I don't want to say certain cities, but I remember sitting at a conference, and they were saying how they had to eat, or had to increase their contribution to their employer health pool by, you know, 40% one year, because they decided not to transfer in the previous two years. So when they start taking all those considerations, I kind of said, maybe it's best right now to hopefully that our insurance rates might go down eventually. It can't go up 10% every year, I hope not. It has been, but you would think with all the talk saying that, and the political pressure to get it down, that someday it wouldn't quite do that. I've looked at, so in Kansas, there's one or two providers that you can actually go to and get a quote for a size like ours, 38 employees. And we do every year, we send out for quotes, and the last two years, Blue Cross Blue Shield was, you know, the better of both the amount in deductibles and out-of-pay max for the money, and really, customer service side, we were at that for a few years there, and it was, it was pretty rough on customer service side. I can tell you, I've, my two cents is, I lost two employees who loved working for City of Bel Air, but there had friends in the private sector that said, we need somebody, I know this person, and they just called him and said, hey, I got a job for you if you want. You know, so when the economy's going big, it's, it's really important that, for me anyway, to really promote our benefits and a lot of different things like that, to retain employees and different things, because we're, really, we can't compete with the private market, but we can in quality of work and quality of workplace, and also benefit side. So that's my two cents on the benefit side of things.
Is there any way to co-op with other cities to go to insurance and get a cheaper rate with more, I mean? There's, in our area, there's not been that. Now, up in the Kansas City area, they do have some Mid-America Association of Regional Councils or something. It's all the cities up there, and it's very strong. It's kind of like a Lambo type thing, very strong, and they do some of that. We've not ever been able to put that together yet. There's been talk about it from different cities, in fact, I've been in some of them. It's just getting Wichita and Sedwick County would be the big ones that really make it work well. Getting them to commit to it is tough. I would think that they'd want to, I mean, because if they can benefit, especially Sedwick County, if they can benefit everybody, everybody's got a little extra money, they're going to spend it in Wichita, they're going to spend it in Sedwick County, I mean, I think. Yeah, I mean, I think the trouble with both Wichita and Sedwick County is they have each other, a couple thousand employees. You add up all the small cities, we have 500. And so they look at us as more probably a hindrance than a help for just adding five.
I wouldn't even say 500, I don't think. Maybe if you add Derby. And I will say, I looked at state, the state health plan you can get on if you're a city, but it's more expensive with worse, worse coverage. So this has been kind of, I haven't had much time recently, but I really looked into it, because I, I see what you're seeing too. It's, it gets crazy. But as far as the retention and the benefits of what we're getting for the cost, this is the best I can see right now. I'm going to continue to work on it and continue to ask the questions. I think there is an opportunity to go with cities, but it's the, you know, it, there's a lot of unsaid questions and a lot of councils to get together, and it would be a massive undertaking that I don't think my counterparts in my, or Ty's position have a lot of time to. That's another issue too.
I think it's really important to keep providing those good health insurance benefits. Is there a magic number of employees that you need to get to before you have more than two options? Is it 50 or 100? Do you know?
The sad thing, and this is, this is, this is not my opinion or anything like this, just the way the market works is it's based on age.
Yeah.
I mean, the older the workforce is, the more costs, and that's just the way it's.
And the federal law is horrible in that, it allows them to charge three times the price for an older employee versus a young employee.
I just wasn't sure you'd mentioned that, you know, there are really only two options for some, an employer of the city's size. What, I was curious what the size is that you need to be to open up more option, more competitive options.
Yeah, I mean, I might have, really, there's about two or three working health plans in the state of Kansas that are recognized, so in the state of Kansas. And there, two of them are combined, so I don't want to start naming names, but I, all I know is we go out the bid. And I would say if it would be state of Kansas, some of these bigger companies can negotiate there, you know, really, we might, we spend almost half a million dollars on health insurance, and you'd think that, you know, if we left, I don't think they would really.
Might notice.
Notice, and it's sad, but it, because you think it's a lot, and I think it's a lot, but they just kind of, there's bigger fish in the pond, basically, is their mentality, which is sad, but.
Well, we're, I don't think we're competing in the market on salary, and so competing on benefits, I think is a way to do that.
That's been our niche.
My opinion is we should keep doing that.
I just seem leave it with Blue Cross Blue Shield leaving, they're expensive, because the employees need that.
Yeah, and I'm really focused on, and I won't continue talking it, but my biggest thing is out-of-pocket maxes, keeping that low. A lot of people will promote, okay, we only have a $1,000 deductible, but your out-of-pocket's $7, $10,000. Well, that makes no sense, because if anything bad happens to you, you're going to pay the out-of-pocket max no matter what. So I really try to push, hey, our out-of-pocket max is $1,500, so if anything happens to you, that's all you have to pay in one year, you know, and that, and that's really a good selling point, and that's what, that's really the only thing I look at when someone gives me a plan, is what's the out-of-pocket max? Because I took my daughter, you know, if you take your daughter into the emergency room, it's 5, 600 bucks right there, so.
If you're lucky.
If you're lucky.
Yeah.
Page five, we have planning and zoning department. That's our building inspector, Keith Price, code enforcement officer. They're probably one of the busiest departments in our city right now, or at least Keith The personnel side, I, because I took Stacy out and put her in administration, we have, Mary's going to do that part-time job of helping Keith out with his files and whatnot, and so there's a little savings in that employee move, moving in and moving out. Everything else is pretty much the same. I increased contractual services, one, because we have a code enforcement, a code enforcement officer that really did his job, and when someone doesn't mow the lawn, we mow it and charge it back to them, and, and that's where they. And, and that's where the expense line comes out of. Also G S I software renewal. Keith's trying to make his job a lot easier by updating a lot of maps and different things that we're trying to do. That's another thing that comes out of contractual. Everything else, liability, insurance, communication services, same. There's a little bit of training Keith goes to every year to maintain all his certifications of being a building inspector, which is really important for us. I will say, say one thing, I think we're one of the smaller cities that have a building inspector. And coming from one that didn't, you give up half your revenues if you don't have a building inspector. So it's, this is actually a really good thing that we have it because he pays for himself quite a bit.
I remember paying Sedgwick County.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, it was awful. The guy just drove by, didn't get out of the car and expect anything. Yeah, it's okay.
And the, the planning and zoning department's three point four percent of our total expenditures for our twenty eighteen budget. Any questions on this one? Okay, page six, court. Court, court personnel went up a little bit because one, I, we have all these new court dates. Lindsay Nygaard is our court clerk slash police clerk. There's a lot of slashes in the city, as you guys know. Mary is gonna be public zoning and our, planning and zoning and then help Lindsay on court dates and different things. So that's reflected in this budget.
So, can you explain that slowly?
Sure.
What exactly changed?
Just a part-time, a new part-time.
So we're adding our time assistant court clerk?
Exactly, yeah.
So the, the police clerk is not charged to the police department at all? It's only charged to the budget department?
No, it's just a court, yeah. And that gets very technical as we go down the road, but I'm kind of, the way, the way tax leads work, I, I want to keep as many things as we can go. Some of the contractuals, oh, good.
I was just gonna ask, what, what was the specific thing that has caused us to add that part-time court clerk?
Mainly it's the.
Ticket count?
Huge increase in workflow for Lindsay. Having multiple court dates, ticket counts are, were up in twenty seventeen quite a bit and twenty eighteen continually. The other thing is, is Lindsay's really good at her job and the police department rely on her a lot for a lot of their stuff. So that's kind of, before, if she was maybe just clerk, court clerk, we'd be okay. But the police need a secretary as well to help, so that's what we chose to. So our judge and prosecutor are paid out of legal services, as you guys saw. And then court interpreter, which is, we're using a little bit more and more under the contractuals that I increased a little bit.
Is that language interpretation or sign?
Yeah, any, any interpretation. They, they have a program that I believe.
They have to.
Yeah. It's not, it's not a physical person coming in, I believe, I believe it's over the phone and then, or, yeah, I, I think, so.
He used to come.
She used, okay, maybe then, then yeah, maybe there's a Spanish, probably a Spanish speaking one that comes. But we also have a system where if someone water bill, and we can't, and they're a different language, we can call into an interpreting service and go three-way in and help communicate with us. They have quite a few different languages they can do. Courts about two point nine percent of our overall expenditures. Next up is parks, parks and grounds on page seven. This is all our parks, maintaining those and keeping them in tip-top shape. We, we do two public works employees out of this fund, a city arborist and a equipment operator. A little contract mowing and contractuals, again, liability, utilities. We've been really focusing on taking care of our trees the last two years. Dave, Dave really said they probably touched about every public tree in our city the last two years. And that's not exaggeration. All he said, we've trimmed every tree we know to see and because we are a tree, tree city, Dave. So that's a slight increase in that budget to reflect what we've done in the past. Probably the biggest windfall in twenty eighteen might be when, because we have touched a lot of trees, we mulched that, that, all of those limbs and, and reusing the mulch instead of paying for it. We actually used the one, the one that we have and we actually had access because we gave it away to the citizens. So that's one of them.
So what was the forty-two thousand dollar expenditure in twenty seventeen of our public grounds improvement?
So that would be, we got a grant to redo Central Park, Central Park playground surfacing, resurfacing playground.
Playground, okay.
And it's a little hard when you get grants because it's a revenue and the expense will show up on our expense. So I, I, so basically that's, we, we got back, I think, half, twenty-five thousand of that, forty-some. So it really cost us next to nothing. I think there's some other things in there too. I don't, I think we did, redid some drainage in a few parks with that money as well. I can look it up if you're, but mainly is the Central Park resurfacing project, which went over really well.
I see we have twenty thousand dollars budgeted for contractual mowing. It looks like we bounced around quite a bit there as to, you know, twelve to twenty-five, down to twenty. How, how do we decide what we pay people to mow versus what our public works mows?
So, in, in the way I, I mean, it's actually cheaper for us to contract mow than to hire more employees to do it. That's the way I, I believe it's, it's true and most cities will do that. In twenty seventeen, we were mowing, I think, in, in October because it was, you know, there's no winter that year. So I think in the twenty eighteen budget, we were a little scared that maybe we'll be mowing in November. Or, you know, we were on the side of caution. Granted, grass doesn't grow that, that fast in those months, so we kind of, I kind of brought it back down to reality. But I think that was the, the scare in twenty, for the twenty eighteen budget was that we're gonna.
Not at all saying that, I think we shouldn't contract that out because I think that makes sense in a lot of cases to contract those things out. I was just curious why there was such a broad fluctuation. I know there's some mowing that we do and some that we don't. So I'm just curious how we decide what, what we do versus don't. Why isn't it all contracted versus?
We, we do all the roadways, right?
Yeah, so we do mow the ride-aways. So, and that's difficult. We've actually looked at contract that, I know it's more expensive to do that. We do have some equipment that we mow with. And so back in, I think it was two thousand eleven, when we really had to look at all of our expenses and laid off some staff, that was the time we really spent on, okay, what are all the parks that we maintain? Brookhouse was one that we paid to do because it's a smaller park. It's, it's easy for, you know, the company to show up, get out, mow, weed whack and be gone in no time. And so, but then when you get to the larger areas like City Hall, they'll mow the, the area around. And then we have bigger mowers that mow, you know, all this, this empty grass out there. So basically that was where we looked at, the bigger parks that there's more cost involved because you need bigger mowers and things like that, where your typical lawn person can come in and mow Brookhouse or Park in no time. So that's, that's how we decide.
So it's based on size?
Exactly.
If it's a really large area, it's more cost effective for us to do it. If it's a smaller area, it's more cost effective to contract it out.
Exactly.
That makes a lot of sense.
Drive through Newton yesterday and a school system administrative building was being mowed with a mower about the width of half this room. It was like, oh my God, we're overkill. Three passes, they're done.
And as you notice, public, public grounds improvement, we've stuck three thousand dollars in there. Equipment breaks down all the time. That's kind of where we did, did with that. The twenty-five hundred, the sand pit and digger, just different, new toys for the, you know, for different areas.
Where do they use the sand pit and digger for? We don't have sand pits.
They're gonna.
Yeah, up here at Bel Air Park, you know, the, we're trying to grow it a little bit. And so the sand that they took out, it used to be a sand that was there for the playground equipment. They took that sand out and kept it. And then they put the resurfacing in. And so they're gonna take some of that sand that we kept and then put an area by one of those little diggers that you can put in the ground and then.
A little toy digger for kids play.
Yep, and then, you know, they sit on.
We don't want sand pits in Bel Air.
It actually will be, yeah.
Yeah.
Final question on that was, is three thousand enough?
Yeah. You know, this one's been, this budget we try, like I said in my introductory, I'm, I'm really trying to focus a lot on getting as much as possible to the priorities of the, of the council. If you guys wish to, and, and we can give certain things out of the equipment funds if we want to purchase some large equipment for things, but it, it'll have to be prioritized against other priorities.
So I mean, cause I know it's limited flexibility.
And I, I know that Dave found one for, I think it was like twenty-five hundred dollars. That would, that would work a public size, that would work, and like I said, the, the sand we already have. So he felt pretty comfortable with the three thousand. I don't know if it'll hold you or I.
I'm gonna try.
An adult-sized one might cost us a little bit.
If it breaks, you can't, you can't play with it.
And Parks and Grounds takes about three point three percent of our budget expenditures. On the other side of the equation, police, about seventeen point eight percent of our budget is spent on police. It's one of our primary, primary functions, keep our communities safe. On the personnel side, we have twelve full-time, one part-time officers or staff, the whole thing. Chief, lieutenant detective, nine police officers, one part-time officers. And, and that's the largest expense out of the police department. Contractuals, yep.
It looked like the health dental wife went up forty-two thousand dollars, which is quite a bit more than ten percent there.
Yeah, and that, and that's what I was trying to allude to in the, in the, in the beginning. So ten percent of, we have a vacant position open and, and vacant officer out. And the way our health insurance works is we pay per person. So if we have an officer with five kids, that makes a huge swing versus a young officer coming out of the academy just covering his cost. So what I do in that situation is kind of plan for the regular sized family coming in, that we have enough that we're not gonna go under. So that, that's about fifteen to twenty thousand if, if that happens is, so that's where you're seeing a large swing in, in the police officer health line.
I hope this isn't an interview question you ask the officer, how many kids do you have?
When we played Blue Cross Blue Shield, the city's still paying the eighty percent and the employee pays twenty, no matter whether they're single or.
Yeah, it's ninety-ten actually.
Ninety-ten.
And that's the same for the employee and family?
Yeah, that's the biggest benefit we have in City of Bel Air.
Yeah, that seems somewhat unusual.
That's the, it's, it's very, it's, it's very unique and I, I really, and I think we keep a lot of.
They're appreciated.
Yeah, yeah, no, believe me, I, I tell everybody.
Cause the single one's still cheated because they have to pay eighty percent too.
And that's another thing why it's kind of hard being a small, because you have those situations. Because if it was, we were on a big plan, a family's a family, a single, a single plus spouse is a certain rate, you know? And it's all age-banded too. So an older person's gonna pay more, we're gonna pay more for a younger, that, that type of thing. The contractuals for the police, digital ticket, I think it's been a big success for reports and whatnot for the chief. That's, again, that's probably the major thing, we pay, pay out the contractuals. Body cam video storage, it's, it's a big industry now because that's a lot of data to store and we store it offsite. And, and it's, it's a little pricey, but that's, that's a lot cheaper than trying to store it here and all the legal situations on that.
On the, on that digital ticket?
Yeah.
Ticket was wild, so I don't know what those were like.
You can't read them.
You can't read them? Okay, so I don't know what that means, but okay.
They print them out on a little handheld thing like that.
Yeah, okay, I, I don't know.
Yeah, so.
Believe me, you can't read it.
The true savings in digital ticket, one, it's easier for the police officers, but it's mainly easier for the backend staff because it uploads automatically to our software. It'll populate all our fields for our court clerk.
Keeps the data.
It keeps the data and also the reports are pretty amazing.
Do, do we have, and I know it's not in the budget, but does anybody know, just back of their mind, how much revenue there is in tickets? I'm not wanting to start driving.
Yeah, that would.
I just want to see what that compares to.
Be close to the police fines, police fines line.
That's the fines?
Yeah, that's the fines. And then the court would be on top of that, right underneath it, so page one.
Court fines hundred and ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, around a hundred and ten.
And that wouldn't all be tickets, right? Some of those are judge imposed fines?
Yeah.
Is that true?
Well, the judge imposed fines would, so if the judge changes your, yeah, your, the fines would just be the ticket cost, but the court cost would be the judge, you know, different things, I believe.
The judge can also impose other fines like for, like expenses that we pay to house someone in jail or other fines that would allow.
And would those show up in the court fines line item?
Or it'd be cost, court cost.
Those probably are court costs.
Yeah.
Okay, so ticket revenue's about a hundred and ten thousand dollars then?
Yeah, that's, I would say that's a good ballpark.
I don't recommend we try to proactively increase that, by the way.
Another thing I do, another thing I do want to point out on the.
We'll get the bad name of Speed Trap again.
We fight that enough.
Yeah.
Chief said, right now looking at some Lexi Pool, it's, it's a training, online trading courses that officers can take. I think he's doing a kind of trial run this year to make sure that we're gonna really participate in it and, and appreciate it. Training of officers, the number one thing in the nation, you hear it all in the news, that's the big thing. So if we can cut down the cost of sending an officer to, you know, Wichita or really anywhere around, around the state, instead just have them do it in the office online with a really good system, we're gonna, we're gonna try it out. I left money in the twenty nineteen budget, so if the twenty eighteen experiment goes right, we can purchase it for all our officers. And that's the slight increase in the training and conferences would be paid for that. Now, if the chief said, we're not using it enough, we won't go forward with it and it'll just remain in our ending balance at the end of twenty nineteen. So that's seven thousand dollars.
All of our officers have graduated from the Kansas Academy?
Yeah, it's a requirement.
Is that a requirement?
Yeah.
I know one time it didn't, it used to be that way. You could hire an officer voluntarily, train within two years of hire or something like that.
I, I know that the other, they all have to be. And then as part of that, I think it's forty hours per officer per year they have to have the training.
Yeah.
So that's why that training.
Any other questions on police before we move forward?
Uh, ammunition, five thousand dollars, does the shelf life on ammunition or what's?
Yeah, so we haven't purchased ammunition and I think since chief was, chief said he got here and they had a whole cabinet full and that was in twenty fourteen.
We're not shooting at eagles.
No, no, no. Well, really it's range and stuff like that, they'll go out to the range and practice. And he said, we're gonna have to purchase some more. So we haven't purchased ammunition since probably before twenty fourteen, I imagine. So he said, let's do it. And it has a shelf life, so.
Doesn't, doesn't have shelf life.
It does, yeah.
So, so if you buy five thousand dollars of ammunition, how many years is that projected to last?
Hopefully more than one, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure it's more than one.
What I'm getting at is with shelf life items, you don't want to overbuy.
No, no.
You might buy the right amount, but what is that amount?
Yeah. Yeah, that, I, I can ask chief that question. That was his, his ballpark for us. So next we have recreation department, page nine. Brian's a pretty easygoing guy. He, he says he's, everything's fine, I got it and then I'll fix it if it breaks. So just, so his budget.
He doesn't have a printer, he's dealing with duct tape.
Yeah, his, his, his budget's pretty stable. A little infill dirt, a little grass seed, some youth sports uniforms. But one thing we did do for him is, and that was in twenty eighteen, I believe, is we, we got janitorial service over there so that the part-time staff didn't have to keep up. And also I think the recreation center is a lot cleaner and nicer than it has been in the past, maybe. Brian's really trying some different, different projects and, and things to go along with his brand-new staff, I think it seems like. staff, I think it seems like, and I look, I think he said he'll have a good year in 2019.
What's the, what's the thought with the janitorial services going up from, well, going from $5,000 to $1,500 up to $10,000?
Where are we at here? Yeah, so that's the, I guess it was in 2019. So in 2018, instead of doing a part-time, we cut one part-time staff and use, basically using that authority to pay for janitorial staff.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that, I guess we.
So 2019 would be the first year of full-time janitorial services.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Sorry about that, good catch. Any questions on rec?
Yeah, youth sports uniforms.
Uh huh.
Is there a revenue associated with that or is that strictly, we pay for those?
Hundred percent, rec fees, so every kid.
Does rec fees, they're buying uniforms at recs?
Exactly, and that's what's hard about, you know, this is the expense line that will get the revenue, so.
That's different from the membership fee, there's an additional fee with each activity that pays.
Yeah, it's a separate revenue line in the, if you go to the rec.
I'll tell you what I love in the summer, going to Walgreens or Dylan's or any time of day, there's at least one kid with their mom or dad and they've got a Bell Air run shirt on.
This is nostalgic, I saw a picture of some kid, I was like, I remember that, I was the blue team. Anyway, any more questions on rec?
Do we have an open position with the rec right now as well?
No, I think we're, we're all full, which is good.
I was just noticing that our health dental life was also a lot more than 10% of an increase in 2019 there.
Because he's got too many part-time.
No, yeah, part-times aren't eligible for that. I think what, what that is, is I'll have to get, have to pull up my personnel stuff.
Is that just a new projection based on new people that we fired?
Yeah, that, that's kind of what, what I'm thinking, off the top of my head, I can pull up the, so I have a huge spreadsheet with all, every individual person and where they're projected at and that's kind of, it's with turnover, you have different rates, so that's pretty much how that goes. Senior center, this is one of my first little mistake on, on the first draft, we, we have a part-time senior director and on the senior grant donations, in 2018, we had $4,000 on that line, 2019, I had four, I was planning on doing 4,000, that's up for debate, but I, I kind of foofooed on the 2018 adopted, it should be 4,000 on the senior, senior grant donations line. This is a little different department because we thought we were going to be at 38,000 instead of 18,000, so right around, actually it was right before we published the budget, Seton County said no, and then, you know, that's where my sheets get a little, a little different when I'm doing these, but.
So 2019 proposed is also 4,000?
4,000, yes. And I'll update that. And that's not going to have any effect on our 30% reserves by 2023.
Thirty-one-five for the total.
Yeah, thirty-one-five. And, and the way this works is we'll make adjustments on this budget, I'll make them, I'll make the adjustments on the pack and give everybody a new pack. If you notice, I have the date in the center of each page, so you know exactly what budget we're on when we.
Now, that 4,000 goes under senior grants and donation?
Yes, at work. Mayor and council expenses, number 11. On the salary line, we have one mayor and four council members.
Actually, I have five council members.
Yeah, council, council member Benage is a 1099 employee, so we pay him out of contractuals, so I should have pointed that.
Makes my accounting a whole lot better.
And because of that, I, and Ty and I, pretty much the expense line is the same, but if we want, we can, we were looking at, the League of Kansas Municipalities puts out a salary study on everybody and contributes and we're kind of on the low end of council pay. We figured if we go $25 extra a month for council, that, that's what we budgeted, if it's within the budget, that's for discussion with you guys.
I'm fine, I'd rather not increase it. I'd be fine with lowering it.
There's only two of us.
Okay, I, I just look at all these for every position and I decided to look at that, so.
Well, I'm actually the one who asked that they do this for.
He was one twice as much.
No.
I was gonna say, the mayor is not even getting one.
I should think, it feels like we're.
And if anybody wants to look, there's the.
We've done quite a bit this year and you guys are doing, putting in a lot of hours, I just thought especially kind of on the lower end.
Well, thank you for that, but I would like to just remain what we're doing.
No problem at all.
You can put that money towards our streets.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
All right, I'll, I'll reduce that line for those lines. As far as contract, and I just sent Jackie out of the room. So, so the way Ty and I were talking, so Jackie's paid out of the administration department, Jackie's kind of happier, she's all, you're, you're a whole employee, the council is over Jackie, but we use her a lot, of course, in the administration side. The way I'm trying to split expenses is to move a lot of what Jackie's licenses and whatnot, kind of the cost of the employee to your guys' department. So any increases you'll see in any line is really some of Jackie's projects, and I'll give her the floor, she was wanting to look at a Munich code online database, and I stuck it in the budget for discussion purposes and also so you guys can see. Jackie, you might talk a little bit about the Munich code online database you're trying, or database, it's more of a software program or online, I don't know, you explain it better than me, I can't.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm more to say that it's a platform, that's what I'll call it.
Platform, there you go.
But right now, our code is stored online in almost like a filing system, very traditional, so prior versions are harder to find from a user, anything from a public user end, easy for me because I just do dropdown from the bottom, from the bottom seams, but for the public, it's harder to find, it's much harder to make updates, so revisions are very difficult and that's something that I do every year. And frankly, even with those revisions, we're slightly, we're always slightly off of prior versions. So Munich code and there are other companies that do it as well, if you've ever been to Wichita, the city of Wichita has got code online or some other cities' codes, you go in, it's very user-friendly, it's a search-based, almost like a Google search-type interface, and you can see the section of the code that you're looking at, you can see prior versions, archive, and understand how those prior, prior versions fit into the context, and then updates are done very easily, like if I were to update the code, I'd send it into this system, so the people who run the system, and it would automatically show up on the website within a very reasonable amount of time. So it's, it's just very user-friendly, it may not be something you're wanting to do now, but in the future, as everything moves online more, it's, and you value communication and you value citizens being able to access the code easily and get accurate versions and most updated versions, I recommend it's something that you invest in. And the longer we go without, like the code we have now, it's just based on, okay, so you've never had any sort of kind of code compilation filtration system, because it runs it through your other kind of things, the longer we go without it, the more it'll cost in the future.
So just to curiosity, if changes in municipal code has to be approved by the council, correct? So, so what check and balances do they put in the system to ensure that happens?
So.
I thought you would do that, but you should have that in place, right?
We would continue to do everything online as we do it. So I would, if you were interested in updating the code, I presented it in a workshop, you may approve it, and then instead of it sitting in a paper file that someone would have to come to City Hall to get the latest version, before codification, codification happens once a year in December.
Right.
That's when I go through and I update everything, add the paper version, then someone along the line in the next few months, Stacy gets it on the online version, it's hard to tell what the archive version is, if, if state law changes and it negatively interacts with that and we don't get to it, you just sort of have to figure that out. Whereas Munich code or some other system like it, I'm not partial to that system, you send it in, it gets updated and archived in a very user-friendly way, and then you get alerts as other interface issues happen with state legislation and other things. So it's, like I said, now may be the time because it's kind of lower price, but it may be something you'll have in the future.
Is it a service that we would pay for every year?
Yeah, so you pay them, it's like you pay a bigger chunk of the.
You buy the license and then you pay maintenance?
Exactly.
Okay.
There's annual maintenance on top of the license.
But you don't have to pay a contractor other than the maintenance.
It probably has to be integrated into our website, wouldn't you like?
Yes, yes.
That's, that'd be.
There is some issues with it.
This to me sounds like something that we might need a whole agenda item on at a future workshop to talk about a lot of those details, but.
Yeah.
Conceptually, I think it sounds like something that would be really useful, especially, I know like our council documents are out there on that filing system, I don't know if we could help with that, but I got an email tonight from, you know, a concerned citizen that thought our website.
We're gonna talk a little bit about that.
Makes, you know, information too hard to find, and we don't even have all of the information necessarily, like for planning commission, and our other groups that meet their agendas aren't even published, and if we could provide a better interface for that, that would help people get to that information more easily, I think that'd be great.
For things like grandfathering in, certain rights or permissions, like zoning matters, you need that, you need the version, the user needs to be able to see the, the version of the code as it existed at the time, that's important, so that kind of interface, it becomes a thing.
I like this as a budget line, I might, if we decided we didn't want to purchase that, we wouldn't have to spend that money, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
And this is, yeah, something Jackie wouldn't just go spend, so.
Yeah, so I guess, I'm a little bit confused, you talked a little bit about starting to move some of city attorney expenses into mayor and council fund, help me understand what we're trying to accomplish, that it just seems a little bit confusing to me to kind of have it split across funds.
Okay, and I, it's one of those finance things where usually the person that does the work for that, that department gets paid out of that department, instead of splitting Jackie 50-50, which would really, you know, kind of look at, would you say you'd rather have a splitter exactly 50-50 or, we were trying to find ways to split the cost of having Jackie full-time, most cities, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily have a city attorney on staff, Jackie's a huge asset to us, don't get me wrong, but I just was trying to split between two departments as far as her attorney's licenses and different things that, that are required, maybe having the council pick up that cost on paper, and in reality, it's all out of the general fund.
Right.
It's not really going to be an issue, I just was seeing on paper, we can say that.
So it sounds like the reason you would do that is so that you could help people understand what's really driving the costs of the city attorney, right? And whether it was just administration or whether it was council?
For me, a lot of it is someone not looking at our budget and saying, they spend how much on administration costs and, you know, and, and this spreads it out a little bit more fair for an observer to say, oh my gosh, you know, different things like that, which we, we don't have that problem, but this is just to kind of spread the cost where it needs to be as far as where the work's being done.
I mean, I think it would be interesting for us as the council to know, you know, like how much of Jackie's time are we consuming with our questions and our research and to see that reflected in our costs.
Yeah.
So I appreciate what you're trying to do, I think, with splitting it out, I'm just wondering if maybe that's the right method to help give us those market signals as to how much expense we're driving.
Well, and, and, yeah, it, it's a little sensitive too when you only have one employee in one fund, so I didn't want to, you know, do a lot of that kind of thing, it's up to you guys, if you want to fund all Jackie out of yours or half of Jackie, you can, I just thought this was a compromise for my proposed budget, we were going to go with it in ties.
I appreciate what you're suggesting there, but the one caution I would have about it is you don't want to make this so you're splitting so many hairs that it drives you nuts. Because I've been in that, been in his shoes, and it could drive you nuts.
Well, I know, like even down to, you know, our internet service, you split that up amongst every single department, and so we're going to really find level of detail with some of those things, but we're, I guess this just feels a little bit inconsistent.
Okay, and, and I make it really easy in my things, if you want me to move it all out or all in, whatever, however you want to do it, I, I flag certain things that I change so that it's really easy to change, I don't have to do a lot of work.
I would say it's easiest for you.
Just adopt it now.
I don't want you kind of.
The attorney's not here, but I have full faith that we may not.
You, you don't become my, in my position without liking numbers and spreadsheets, so I, it's not a lot of, this is the fun part of my job.
You're doing good.
I'm not super hung up on that, but I guess the alternative in my mind would be to say, hey Jackie, how much of your time do you spend supporting council? And if she said 50%, then we would allocate 50% of city attorney costs to the mayor and council, if she said 25%, we'd do that.
I should say, the mayor never leaves me alone.
Well.
That what she said?
To, to me the.
Yeah, it's a council member.
To me, that would make most sense, just because that was kind of the rationale of us bringing in Jackie full-time is because we can either contract out for an attorney for X amount of dollars and then Ty still needing help, or, or pay someone full-time and then contract, which ends up being a lot more than, so we just hired Jackie full-time and that helps Ty, plus helps the council, kills two birds with one stone.
Yeah, the mayor and I had to pull teeth to get that.
It, it, it's worked out really well, kind of how, how we planned, it's just as far as how much time she spends on you guys, I don't really know, and we can ask Jackie to track that, maybe next budget cycle we address it.
Hands where your numbers are now.
I'm not asking, Jackie should track her to that degree, but I think she probably has, you know, an idea, a rough percentage as to what that, you know, what that would be.
Yeah.
We all kind of know how we spend our time, I think, in our daily jobs, and you spend 20% of my time on this and 50%, and if it's not scientific, I think that's perfectly okay.
And really, it's not a lot of expenses, it's just mainly her licenses, a little increase in training because Jackie is still getting used to it, and then like stuff like the Munich code database, we can talk about that. So really, it's not a lot increased, so she's mainly funded out of the administration side of the, the budget.
So we can just ask her to kind of give us a testament and then you can just make those changes?
Can make those changes easily, yeah. And it'll probably reflect pretty accurately what it'd cost to contract out to attorney on you guys' side plus, you know, the administration side of.
Well, we don't want to contract and we don't want to go half-time, we've been done that.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's worked out great. Page 12 is, is our non-departmental fund, this pays for stuff like the audit, accounting software, stuff everybody uses, this was set up before my time, it's, it's, it's nice to just plug it into one and not try to divide how much people are using the accounting software of each department. Other things include IT services, so that's, that's one source, that's our, you know, one shop stop for all our IT services, that means if something breaks, we have someone to call and he'll be here in 24 hours or less usually. Different, the large copier downstairs, that, that contract, HVA service for this whole building, little, or stuff like that. The liability insurance side of things is mainly building insurance, that, that portion, a few other little things. Janitorial service for the whole building, a little bit of utilities, let's think something else here.
Ted, yes.
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, accounting software, where does the water billing and water tracking, where does that fit into this?
So that's another great point of the, why we have a franchise fee and why it needs to, all that, all the water, it's all in one system, I guess, so it's all, it's Summit from data tech, it's different modules inside of one system, so we have a general ledger module.
And over mission.
So that's the accounting software?
Accounting software line, yeah, and they're pretty responsive and, and good, I got some ideas to improve a little bit, but we'll get to that.
Okay, just a curiosity question on key services, I know that's contracted, have we looked at competitive on that, competitive bids on that? Have we looked at competitive on that, competitive bids on that? When's the last time we looked at that?
Yeah, we did that probably three years ago, I think, something like that. And we'd actually been talking. I sent a filler, I had a salesman come in, like they always do, and I said, hey, give me a price. You know, just because we were, I was curious, like yourself. And they're a pretty well-known company in the area, and they're seventy-five thousand dollars for our system. So it's about time we probably, we might look at it here, but that one kind of scared us a little bit when I asked him.
Just to curiosity, do you get, are they able to do work off-site on your computers?
So that's.
One service I used at the time was able to do that, just tap into your computer off-site.
We don't, we don't allow many people to do that. It's, one, it's a little security risk when you have it easier, like, easy like that. But basically, we remote it to our desktop, that's on server, and then work that way. So yes, there is capabilities of doing that, but it's pretty limited.
Is the IT service doing that, that log?
Yeah, they're allowing us to, yeah, yeah, they do that. They do everything, security and.
In reality, that's probably not a bad price.
It's, it's pretty competitive.
Just thought I'd ask a question.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Sure.
Maybe for Ty, I don't remember. How long have we had this auditor?
So odd, um, twenty, when do we talk about that?
Four, five years?
I think it's been four years, four years or so.
It's been longer than that because he was here when I was here. I left in twenty-eleven.
Maybe it's been four years since we.
Peterson, Goss.
Yeah, but we just went to.
Alan Gibson.
Alan Gibson, Huick, and we've had them before, but it seems like each year, his price goes up. Is it time to go look for another auditor?
You know, we had this conversation with CCUA last year, and same thing. It seemed like when our current one went up, everybody's went up just about the same amount. Not to say that it's not worth looking again, but I can just tell you, sitting on the CCUA board, that we went through this very conversation. Oh, golly, not even a year ago.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
Are you seeing the same auditor each time, or are you seeing different auditors?
We had a whole new staff this year of auditors.
But it's the same company?
Same company.
I was gonna say, there might be other reasons that it would be good to hire a different auditor. You want to rotate that?
In my business, we got to rotate auditors every few.
Yeah, my GFOA, GFOA standards in governmental finance is five years. Do you want to at least go out for an RFQ or RFP?
We're just checking to see the price.
Exactly. So that's something I can put on my radar, and we can get done in twenty-nineteen.
I don't have anything against this guy, but we've had him a long time.
They're a pretty big company, so they do say this. We're a little smaller one, so it's kind of fun because they send us one experienced auditor and their trainee. So it's been a fun last three or four audits, hanging with them.
What about our increase in liability insurance from twelve thousand to twenty thousand? Is that a known increase, or are we just planning for worst case there?
You know, insurance is a little more difficult because I think Lonnie brought us a check for ten thousand a few months back. And that's, that's not guaranteed. And the twelve to twenty is what I'm seeing and what I'm talking to Lonnie about, you know, five percent of, you know, increase. And I can't really count on that ten. I don't expect us to do twenty. In all actuality, we, we got a nice price cut on our cyber liability this past year. I think they cut it in half because it's becoming more and more known, and there's more competitors in the market. So hopefully, we'll not, we won't use that, but it's one of them line items where I sure don't want to be short and have, you know, because really, we're at the mercy of, you know, what our risk is and what insurance companies are doing. If we get another ten thousand dollar check, we will definitely not spend that amount. Also, in the transfer out lines, that's probably your, the two biggest one is to capital improvement reserve, two hundred thousand, and equipment reserve, two hundred thousand. We'll talk about it more than after we get out of the general fund, what I'm planning to do. Think of capital improvement reserve as street improvements. That's really what, what's in there. But there's other things as well. So we'll talk about that, but I just wanted to point out, those are those transfers. City Hall debt service and pool debt service is also there. And then that's about sixteen point seven percent of our budget is a non-departmental.
Didn't we put four thousand, four hundred thousand in street fund last year?
Only two hundred twenty-five from the general. We put another two from the solid waste fund last year. Central Park Pool, it's about point nine percent of our expenditures. We have a lot of seasonal staff. Pool upkeep, if there's any questions, let me know. It's relatively the same.
On the, the loss, this is a net loss of thirteen thousand four, four hundred fifty dollars when you look at the revenue from pools. And that's an increasing loss. Last year, your adopted budget was eleven thousand seven. Year before, it was only two hundred ninety-four dollars in actuals. So what's happening there that's causing that to continue to go more negative?
It's why the city of Wichita is closing pools. It's expensive.
I told you to fill it in with cement and make a skate park out of it.
They really do that. But, yeah, pools, rec departments, those types of things, I mean, they're not, they don't make the city money. I mean, but they do make the city, they bring in revenue as far as being an attractive city, being a place that people want to live and come to.
I'm just, I'm just concerned about the trend. We came positive four thousand in sixteen, in seventeen, we lost two ninety-four, that's.
Especially, but as long as we owe on it, there's no way we're gonna make money.
And I, and I would caution too, is I think you're.
In the figure here.
I think your twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen are probably better representations of how the pool does than my budgeted numbers because we might be busy and use more lifeguards. You know, so lifeguards are tied to, the biggest expense is really personnel. And the more busy, the more guards you gotta have on duty. There's a lot of different factors, but.
The pool debt's not included, right? So you really.
Yeah, you really have a lot of.
He hasn't even figured it out.
A hundred and five thousand dollars plus on that makes it a hundred and eight thousand dollar projected expenses next year.
Much worse loss.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Page fourteen, we have community development expenses. As I told you, I moved our director of communications out of personnel, so that zeroed out that line. Really, what we're spending out of this is our chamber commerce dues, Lions Club, regional chamber. And then we're paying for Fall Festival, Spring Festival, and a holiday open house. The biggest trend I hope you'll like to see is the home reimbursement is, should go down in twenty nineteen, if my charts are right, which I think they are. So we're starting to retire that program, meaning paying off what we had. We're accepting no new contracts since the end of, really, the end of twenty sixteen. So soon, that'll be down to zero, and that's almost a hundred thousand dollar savings as you, as you go forward. But right now, it's twenty-five.
I have a question. Did they, have we talked about what the two fifty-four quarter dues are gonna be? And where, where is that gonna come out of? Would that come out of the?
It'd have to come out of here.
Community development?
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know, we're probably looking at a thousand bucks.
Yeah, I, I can up it, but, you know, that, and that, that little stuff is what I kind of, I kind of budget for some of that stuff happening. So a lot of these numbers probably aren't exact, so if, you know.
Planning to reduce our advertising and marketing?
So a lot of that was because we are no longer going to, we'll see a bit, yeah, home show.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was a big.
Under the, the Fall Festival and Spring Festival and Holiday Open House, don't they need more money in that for the three activities?
I asked Tristan, Tristan, that's what we've done in the past. Now, if you want more stuff, then you can increase it, but.
I'd like to, I mean, with the attendance is, all they increase every year.
If they go keep getting bigger and bigger and adding activities, I think more people would come.
Let's give a little more there.
Well.
Well, we've got, it looks like.
But I don't know anything about the committee, so I don't know how they feel.
Because in twenty seventeen, our actual was fifty-eight twelve, and we've got nine thousand budgeted. And so if Tristan's comfortable with that and thinks that it's good, I'm not sure I'd want to mess with it.
Well, the other thing, I mean, I wouldn't mind upping that a little bit, just because I think those are great events, and I think they can get bigger. But I think there's other avenues that we can help make it bigger as well. We know from our conversations with, with the schools in town and having them do some, some things to help, you know, with booths and displays and things like that. I think, you know, like I said, my, my dream is to, at the very least, make the Fall Fest an all-day thing instead of from ten to two. And, you know, I know you came out with your car last, last year, and unfortunately, it rained, so I think we, we lost a lot of cars. But, you know, the year before that, I think we had the Mustang Club out there with twenty Mustangs or something like, I mean, there was, you know, there's been a great showing. But I think the Fall Fest can get bigger and better. I think the Spring Fest has, has been growing every year. You know, that, now that would be something I wouldn't mind seeing maybe a little more put towards the Spring Fest because if you look at the amount of kids that come to that thing, to be able to give them more things to do besides, you know, the rush of kids that go to the, go to the eggs and then everybody stands in line for a favor. Or, you know, everybody, so, you know, I think.
Bring back money in the straw, that'll work.
Do what?
Money in the straw. I had a kid, Wes, at the Fall, the Spring Festival, he said, Mrs. Martine, how come you're not doing money in the straw anymore?
I know that the numbers are starting to get huge.
Well, we only use seventy-five dollars.
Tristan got twelve thousand eggs, and they were all gone within ten minutes.
Do we know what Fall Festival, what we spent on it this year? I know we budgeted, so.
I think it's three, three, and three is what the, probably, I imagine it fluctuates. One might be four and two, I'm not sure. I can get you those numbers.
I was just curious because, you know, we've, looks like we could grow it by fifty percent and still stay within, you know, what we've got budgeted based on the twenty seventeen actuals because we spent fifty, twelve.
Part of that also, I believe in twenty seventeen, especially the open house, some of the money for the decorations and things like that came from the, when the community development had the ten thousand dollars in there.
Well, that might explain, it was a lot higher in twenty sixteen, so, okay.
And that would maybe be.
We did the Christmas banners, we did the Christmas tree, we did a lot more decoration type things. And then there was a lot of things that the, you know, the people themselves donated and made themselves and brought to the, you know, so there was, there were some, some savings that we really did too, to, to help that and not spend the entire ten thousand dollars. And just, I mean, there was a lot of things that we did to maximize that, really.
Well, I think we still need to do more decorations on the wood lawn and come and have.
Yeah, we continue to grow those Christmas lights though.
Yeah.
Well, the Christmas, the banners, I think.
Well, yeah, but I'd rather have the solar Christmas lights.
Okay, I mean.
Tristan was gonna check on that to see if West Star would let us hook on those posts. But I don't know why they wouldn't, because they'd let us do the flags there, and besides, we need more flags too.
Yes, I think those areas are amazing.
I wanted to ask a question too. I know Justin brought it up earlier with the, you know, the decrease in advertising and marketing. I was actually gonna ask if we could go back up to seventy-five hundred, if not eight or ten. The reason being for that is, especially, I am coming back, you know, two months from attending ICSC, where I saw how we need, you know, as far as flyers and multimedia stuff that I can take is we're meeting with potential retailers that are gonna come here. Matter of fact, I'm gonna talk about this under other, I met with the owner of Forty-Fifth and Rock today about some of those contacts I made in general. We made some phone calls. And Lonnie, we had some slick, and I can bring, you know, examples of some better economic development pieces, collateral material. Tristan does an amazing job with the shoestring budget that she has for that, for what we're able to take. But it was obvious that we were there on a shoestring budget when looking at other towns. Especially where we are right now, as you've heard me talk about it a hundred times, we're right on that tipping point of being, you know, where, you know, the horrible woe-is-me days are gone, where it's ready to just rock and roll and really promote our city. And especially, you know, with someone like Tristan, I've worked with her in having these experiences and talking to other economic development people too. I would like to see us spend some money on some real marketing pieces for our city that talk about all these wonderful things, put them in one place. How we're the safest city, how we're the fastest growing, how we have the highest income per capita. Those are all things that are so true. When I was even talking with the guy who owned retail land here, he didn't know some of those things and was asking for that is, you know, they're spending, you know, these developers that we're having some conversations with are spending, you know, fifty thousand dollars on layouts. And here's our white paper, you know? And talk about, you know, the fact that, you know, Northeast Magnet is what, the fifth best school in the state or something?
Top five.
Top five, you know, I know Jeff and Jackie have had conversations with them. There's a lot of things here that are great because as, we don't have the traffic counts, but we've got everything else. And I'd really like to see, see us put some more, and I think I'm kind of hearing too, we're hearing, you know, Christmas lights and promoting and putting our best foot forward. You know, we don't brag about how great of a city we are enough, in my opinion. So I would ask that we put some more, that we increase that.
Just go back to what you had and just, just not use it for the home show, just use it for other, other promotions.
But we already took it out, yeah.
Yeah, use it for other promotions.
He's talking, he's saying, put it back in.
Yeah, 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 that's what I'd like, yes.
Yeah, I think it's fine. You need to promote the city, that's.
If, if our real estate partners at Marlin or Jerry, if they want to do some advertising for the land that they're trying to sell on our behalf, where does that money come from?
They pay it.
So, so in our land expenses, the next department, there's an advertising marketing line as well.
Okay.
So there's kind of a dual advertising and marketing.
Because one thing promoting, hey, these ten acres are for sale, or says, Bel Air's great.
Exactly, that's kind of the.
That's why it's kind of.
They're kind of related.
Yeah, they are, but they're still too separate.
I definitely think we undersell us. I mean, as many things as we have, which are positive going for us, I think we need to be shouting that from the rooftops.
Because we're Marlin Jerry.
So you're talking of adding eighteen hundred to the nine thousand?
I'll put thirty-five hundred on top of the advertising and marketing.
Yeah, I was saying, taking that four thousand and bumping back up to the seventy-five hundred.
Advertising and marketing.
Oh, okay.
Obviously, without us going to a home show this year.
But you're not gonna give them anything for the Fall Festival, Spring, or the Holiday?
That's gonna drop, right? I mean, because that was budgeted, but we decided, or it was decided not to do that because there's no bank.
Late, late twenty seventeen, yeah?
Yeah.
And Councilor Marlin brings up a good point. Do we want to, especially as we're gonna continue to grow, do we want to put a little bit more in for these other festivals?
I think we should do both. We should increase both from last year.
I would agree.
Both promotion, yeah.
Thank you.
Let's go with twelve on the, on the community relations and events.
Twelve?
Nine to twelve.
Okay. And seventy-five.
Seventy-five advertising and marketing.
I will, I will point too, I know we kind of went over it, on the administration budget, there is ten thousand dollars sitting there as well. This year, we might do live meetings, but feel free, that's, you know, that's really the talk, you guys talk to Ty. If you guys want to do a huge media, that's another pot of money we have inside our budget.
I want a video from showing the access.
It's in twenty eighteen, it's in twenty nineteen as well.
That's what we need.
Because I know that was the, that was moved out.
Take highlight on our land.
I think that's something that Ty is, I'm gonna see some more on more banners, more, I mean, just more everything to promote the city.
Another, another thing, yeah.
Like you said, Tristan's checking on the equipment for the Facebooks.
Well, I think if you check on those holiday solar lights now, they'd be cheaper than if you wait until closer to November.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're talking January and February are the best times for that.
Yeah, but it's too late for that last year.
Might even get them in time.
Yeah, well, she's pretty good about ordering stuff and getting it in a couple of weeks.
I know, I know we're talking a lot about the details of each of these individual funds, but one of the things that I was looking at that just made me a little bit uncomfortable, I'm curious how everyone else feels about it, is just that our proposed, just twenty nineteen totals have us spending more than we're bringing in. So I know we've got some cash reserves that we can dip in. So I know we've got some cash reserves that we can dip into, but the way the current budget's laid out without adding more expenditures to any of these funds, it looks like we're budgeting to spend a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars more than what we're going to take in. And I understand there may be some really good scenarios where you're saving up for a project or you're going to, you know, make strategic investments where you would spend more than you're taking in. I'm curious what everyone thinks about that. It concerns me.
So to Ted's point when he first started the meeting, he says he's looking at this percentage of new revenues at the bottom line on the very first page, and he's looking at the 2023 forecast of thirty percent. And he's trying to target that thirty percent. And I surmise, I assume that in 2024, next year, we'll be looking at the same budget, and he'll have that thirty percent in 2024 instead of 2023. So what he's doing, because of all the uncertainties of revenue and expenditures, he's trying to maintain that five-year projection at thirty percent. And so it's okay to spend more this year than you had coming in because things came out better last year than proposed. And if it goes south, that cushion maintains that cushion and you can then reduce next year if things go a little bit south for long.
Yeah, I understand it's okay because we have cash reserves and, you know, we want to stay above thirty percent. And this kind of shows us projecting out to thirty percent. I guess my question is, do we want to spend away our cash reserves through just basic operating expenses towards other capital projects?
And that's why I want to bring up, these aren't, so we have four hundred thousand inside this current budget going to one-time expenditures in capital improvement and equipment, that transfer. So that, that three hundred thousand is actually our operating balance pretty much.
And that was our transfer to the, for the streets?
Streets, capital improvement for the streets and equipment reserves, four hundred thousand.
And I understand the equipment reserve one, I guess the streets, maybe I'm a little bit more concerned about thinking about that as a one-time expense because I feel like that's something that we're going to need to see every year going forward as that continued maintenance and projects on our streets.
Well, and we'll get to that after we finish the general fund. It'll become a lot more clear for you. But that's my number one, I think Jim explained it great, that's my number one concern and that's what S and P will talk to me, is how have you prepared? I see you're going a little under. How have you prepared in the next five to 10 years? And all I do is show them my forecast and say, "Look, I got thirty percent reserves." And that's, you know, that's, and they accept that and they say that's good budget.
The other thing to keep in mind too is this is kind of very conservative, almost worst case scenario for revenues then.
I mean, this is, I'm imagining that you did not include, I mean, things that we have contracts for that we have not been, have not closed yet, as far as like the property across the street.
That's, that's a big no. Well, yeah.
Okay, I don't know if we would think about that.
Talk about being conservative, I mean, it's on the books.
But I would, I would say it's not, it's not, I mean, it's conservative in our revenue side, but it's also conservative in the fact that I don't include transfers to streets and different things. So this is mainly to make sure we can operate, because I'm very concerned. What I think the reason why you brought it up is we're not spending all this on operating expenditures, are we? Because that would be wrong budgeting. And that, you're exactly right, and that's why we're not doing that. These aren't operating reserves we're spending.
And when we think about, you know, revenues that come in from land, really that's offsetting debt that's on our books. So I'm not sure I really think about that as revenue.
It's also taxes that the cities are paying. I mean, there's-
Right, we will get increases in paid taxes.
So, so if we, and I just keep us, on land expenses, page fifteen, if everybody's down with community development, I think we-
You need to get those averages for this.
Yeah, yeah. This is where the main land debt comes out of in the transfer line, and to your point, right now it's one point, almost one point one million. And this is where, if this was, if we were sitting next year and looking at the 2020 budget, we would see a five hundred thousand dollar increase. So this is where I smoothed that bubble. So the next three or four years, we're going to see about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars increase every year on that line. Now, to your point, if we get a major land sale, what are we going to do with those proceeds? We could use those proceeds to, as, you know, a one-shot on the, the pickup a half a million dollars of this one point one million in a certain budget year and redo a whole street?
No, we're putting it on principal and interest.
That's the, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying is a big decision for this council. The next time we sell lands, we'll have that big, long discussion. But I wanted to at least show you in our budget where that could affect us big is, imagine if you had, you know, didn't have to make a payment because we had it in land sales in one year. That would be kind of a windfall that you could use on different priorities. However, not the case in 2019, yet anyway.
But now that we have more marketing, we will be able to talk about this this time next year.
The increase in, the increase in marketing is looking at historical trends. Also, Jerry, or Jones Commercial Development expenditures will come out of that. That's our more aggressive land sale approach, I believe. Engineering's kind of a straight twenty. I know we don't usually spend a lot in that, but we, a lot of times, different, different projects require different things and we'll need a line for that. In 2017, we only spent five thousand, but in 2016, we spent a lot more, so we like to budget for that. Contractual services is mainly cost-benefit analysis for businesses that want to come in and get an abatement of some sort. Parcel research, contract mowing and pond treatments go out of that. Other than that, all the, that's about it. And then all our, all our different debt. I think we've talked about that in our first budget meeting, but if you have any questions, let me know.
The specials that we're paying on all city-owned lots, I see Terrebaire is specifically called out, but those in Elk Creek and other places, those are in the other specials?
Those are in the others. I twisted that line because I really don't know year-to-year what it's going to be. And this is more comfortable and what I want to be at in our bond and interest fund so that we're not bleeding or doing any harm.
And these are because the property owners are not paying the taxes.
Property owners aren't paying, exactly.
We think that three hundred and fifty thousand is pretty real for 2019?
Yeah, so, so that's, that's what I think's real for 2019. What I do when you see the state budget form, and it's going to take a little while because state requires you to spend all your, every, every dollar you get gets assigned somewhere. A few years ago, they created a cash forward line, which is nice, which I put a little bit. But I kind of probably will put around a half a million to a million in that line and just in case, you know, just in case we have a terrible thing happen. Nothing I'd ever spend. It's more of our cash forward line, but it's to help judge who's going to default in one certain year. It's not a, I'll show you when we do the state budget. It's pretty elementary, I guess, the way they make you do it, but it's a, in statute, so.
I have a question for Ty.
Yes.
Whatever happened to Terrebaire? Was it in May they were supposed to make a decision?
Yes, actually, we found out that they are set, we're set for a sheriff's auction. Do we know the date yet?
We don't have a specific date. We know they're set for the third sale. That typically happens in the fall, late, in the summer, late summer, sometime in fall. So more than that.
So those doctors that were, whoever was going to buy that, they didn't do it?
So what happens now that it's actually been determined and set for sheriff's sale, the only way that, up until that point, someone could come in and pay a portion or one year's worth of taxes and then they get another-
Let's hope she doesn't come out with it.
Yeah. They don't have to pay all back taxes, specials, just a portion.
First year.
That, that was a concern for us because, and that just keeps pushing the ball down the road. Where now that it's actually been established for sheriff's sale, the only way it'll come off of that is if someone pays all this back specials and taxes.
Good.
And if not, then, if that doesn't happen, then it will go to sheriff's sale. And that's where we'll have to visit with the council on your options at that point.
I bet she's spitting nails.
So in aggregate, all department budgets went up, really pretty holding the line, pretty steady. We went up two percent from eighteen to nineteen budgeted anyway. And then budget total would be six percent, and a lot of that is due to our transfers out and increase in debt. So that's the general fund. We can take a short break, because if you want to keep on through. File through will work.
Hey, hit him.
Who wants to file through?
Okay, yeah, keep going.
And hopefully we'll go a little quicker. The general fund's a little hard to digest, that's why it's first. Page seventeen, what I'm most excited about, these next two funds, equipment replacement reserve, and it's the first one. And the way we've done it in the past is kind of a hope and dream plan where we would put everything on one line and then hope we had the money there. I want to kind of structure it more, more, with, let you guys understand it first before we start doing that. I'm a big fan of state government and the way it works is, you know, if a bill gets above the line, it gets, it gets debated. So this is basically what I'm showing you on page seventeen is everything we did the past three years, actual spending, what we bought and what we, what we purchased, John Deere backhoe and the international dump truck. And I think you guys enjoyed that experience of big purchases come before the council. You guys get asked questions, approve the spending, and it's done. As you see right here on the top of it, sorry, I don't mean to get ahead of you guys, I have water and sewer contributing finally to this equipment replacement fund. We just purchased a dump truck that's primarily used, yes, as roads, but also used when we do a lot of utility maintenance. So there's four hundred thousand dollars coming into the equipment replacement fund and help bolster that. We're going to end with fifty thousand dollars into this year, which frankly is not enough. If we have a car blow-up, we're barely funding that. So I hope to improve this fund a little bit. Page eighteen, which is more exciting, I guess, and I kind of-
Can we go back to S and T?
Sure.
So we're looking at adding two hundred thousand dollars to that equipment reserve fund in 2019?
From the general, yeah.
From the general fund?
Mm-hmm.
What specifically are we thinking that's going to pay for?
Yeah, page eighteen is, and this is why, this is kind of-
I thought we were going on to a new fund.
No, 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 you're fine.
Quick question on seventeen before you go on. Twenty sixteen, it looked like we bought three police vehicles. But I didn't, is that, is that accurate? We bought three police vehicles in twenty sixteen?
We did.
Twenty sixteen, okay. Did that have a fleet, didn't it?
Yeah.
Seven, six, seven, yeah. Okay.
And that's something we're trying to work with the chief on, is maybe doing one a year or something rather than that up and down stuff.
Well, I think the only reason we did three is because he got such a good price on them.
Yeah, and then we-
And we had that hailstorm too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we also had purchased a couple of used ones from the state highway rail and they were out of, they were weighing a hundred.
Another one of those deals.
Yeah.
They were real mild, mild.
And really, page seventeen, just to kind of show you, what, what do we want to see out of the purchase out of equipment fund in the next five years? I like to keep it blank because then you don't think that we have to spend something. This is your guys', these are both your guys', all of it's your funds, but these are specifically your guys' controlled funds. Now, page sixteen has all our recommendations in it. What years, what we, eighteen, sorry, page eighteen has recommendations. I know in January of 2019, I'm going to have a really convincing argument that we need a new server downstairs. You guys get to debate it, judge it off of what you might think a Bobcat for the public works is compared to a new server. And then, and then we fund what we can out of this and what you want your reserves to go.
When we get there.
Quick question is, when was the last time you replaced a server?
We have six different servers that, because when we started out, they thought it'd be more security and it can really just have one big server and it can solve a lot of IT issues.
When we, when we get there, I'd like to talk about some alternatives, setting up a server here in the building.
Okay, I'm welcome to everything. I just need something.
Yeah.
That's your, anyway, anyway, I just, in twenty-
Is that a good amount?
For one server?
Or to do what you're, I mean, because, you know, we're just kind of coming up with numbers.
Right, yeah, ten thousand dollars is a lot for hardware.
Okay, that's one of the things. Also, we really need to go on a desktop replacement plan. I think in 2015, we bought, I think, twenty or so, and then all those are starting to get, maybe it was 2014 or twelve, I can't remember. But I, I just thought we would buy at least eight, maybe nine a year so that we can filter through our system instead of getting a big hit. Again, public works, last budget workshop I did, pictorial equipment things, I hope you have them in your files. But this is what Dave said he might need in the next five years. And then Rec will probably need a new mower by 2022. Police has a lot of different, a lot of different requests. One, I know the maintenance on car twenty-six is getting ungodly and we'll probably ask for a replacement for that car at the beginning of 2019.
How many full-time, or how many cars do we have in service that's going to be air patrol? Does that include the senior patrol car?
No, no, it doesn't.
And what's the most number of officers that we have on patrol at any time?
Three. Well, I guess no, it'd be plus chief and-
Yeah, so we've got, of the three, we've got six patrol vehicles. Three of them are run two shifts a day, and then one is, and then the other three are run one shift a day. So, and that's the discussion that the chief is always looking at is, do you hot seat them and run them 24/7 and have four vehicles or do you, what he does, that's what he likes to do is, you know, so one month he'll run three, two shifts a day, and then the next month, he'll switch those vehicles so that the one that was only running one shift, he'll run two shifts. But, you know, every, every month, you've got two vehicles that are getting twice the mileage. I mean, two sets of vehicles.
Yeah, that's what I was just kind of wondering how we were working that and if we really needed six or could we do five or do with four and replace them more often so that they always stay newer?
So the beauty of doing this, as far as transferring a large chunk into a fund like this, is you guys get to have these discussions, not in an hour or two of a budget meeting, but in, in, you know, a workshop.
Trying to say we're getting off topic here.
No, 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 I just, I just, I prefer, I think you get better results out of that and you assess your priorities better than trying to fit it all into the general fund and say, "All right, do it."
I always liked the idea of a couple sitting even if they're not being used because God forbid you need, something happens, you got to call on your officers and everyone's got to respond to one or one goes down.
Or you have to use your own vehicle.
Yeah, which has happened before.
One thing I will mention that's a little, we're watching really close, we, we're going to pay our last, we lease some, or not lease, leased to own some PD radios in the, in the previous, in our last payment is 2018, so we'll own them outright. Sedwick County, which is on the nine-one-one dispatcher, is thinking about upgrading their system, which is not compatible with our current radios.
So they can pay us.
If they do that, it might be, that's why I have to be determined on that line. It might be a rush, so that's why I like to have also a little bit of money in this fund so if something, emergency comes up, we can act on that. Now, we can go to page nineteen, because all this information is probably going to be decided at a later date. In the capital improvement reserve, we have two hundred coming from general. I think we can do another hundred from solid waste this year. And then two hundred for from the street fund will go into here. This, this, like the equipment replacement fund, you can turn to the next page and find all the list of public works, or street projects we have that, and outline. This is an ever-growing list and wanted to make sure that this isn't the final list. It's just the current one we have. As you can tell, we have about, we'll have like seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in this fund at the start of 2019. We have about one, one point three million in street improvement projects we could do. We also compare those to maybe, if we want to bond for a master park, we can, but it's also in here. We have, you know, a new roof for the rec building. So I really want us to think, because I don't want anybody to come out here and say, "We can have everything." This is me forcing, I know, sorry. This is me kind of forcing the issue that there has to be priorities within the city and this is how I'm trying to put it nicely that we're going to have to judge off, you know, off what we want to do with this limited amount.
And this doesn't include the wood lawn project expenses?
So the wood lawn's kind of already in play that we're going to, we've already bonded for the engineer, or tip noted for the engineering, so I kind of just took that as a, it's in all our forecasts. So I kind of just took that as a, it's in all our forecast projections. It's, it's kind of already, it's not spit money, but it's already.
How much we give, how much we change the project, right?
That's right.
Yeah, exactly. And so.
Well, I mean, that's something we've got to think about. Do we want to bond the whole project or do we want to try and fill up with some money to not borrow for the project?
That might be nice, but.
Those are the priorities that we've got to think about.
Exactly. So, so this is what I kind of want to show you is why we, why the growth in our general fund's good and why maybe not saddling the general fund with more operating expenses or debt because that would only cut into the $200,000 transfer that we throw into here. So that's just kind of my way of showing you guys, we don't have to spend a lot of time on this because it's, it's going to be discussed.
Quick question.
Sure, sure.
Is not the head road project already done?
What's that?
The third from the bottom, head road, forty-fifth to Sunrise, isn't that done?
So, and I knew, I knew someone's going to say that. It's, I think it's from the end of the, what we just constructed to somewhere. Anne has it on her. It's, it's continuing, it's one of the sections in there. I'll have to get that for you.
I think we've already done it.
It might be that section.
Unless that's a spur out there that goes the cul-de-sac, but that cul-de-sac wasn't in bad shape and needed to be replaced.
The cul-de-sac wasn't included in that.
No, but it wasn't in bad enough shape that it needed to be replaced, it needs some maintenance.
Well, there's that section in the road that goes up to the rec center from head row that's kind of barricaded off so you can't drive through there.
Right.
That's not ours. That's Sunrise's.
Yeah, I don't know. That's the only thing I can think of.
Yeah, that's our.
Because that'd still be part of head row, I would think.
Yeah, I think it's.
Well, I took it that it'd be head row on forty-fifth to Sunrise. Well, that's not 301,000.
Yeah.
That's a half, that's a block.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's a lot of money. Anyway, I don't know what it is, but it just looked odd to me and I just wondered.
Two questions already.
Maybe something else.
I'll find it. That was the only one I half-nated from Anne's list. I was trying to put it in, put it in the, thanks. I was like, ah, no.
You'll, you'll look it, look it up.
Yeah, I think from those other lists that she gave us, that was already complete.
Okay, and maybe I was worried, maybe she sent me the, an older list, but I just wanted to show something, so.
Yeah, that's fine, okay.
Okay, so page twenty-one. Now I'll start going a little faster.
You hope.
Bond and interest, pretty much, we collect all special, or special assessments, or this county collects all special assessments and they go straight to our bond and interest fund. We pay all our debt out of that. That's pretty much what it does. It collects revenue and expenses. We're going to pay about $2.8 million in debt. That's total city. That's including all the developments around us and stuff, not city at large debt, but that's what that fund does. Any questions?
Yeah, how did you reduce the delinquent special assessments from 132,000 to 50,000?
So, this is, if you, if you see, this is one of the, the fund, the bond, or the, the funds that have estimated in 2018.
Okay.
Because right now I'm seeing, we have like 120 or so thousand delinquent specials and that was mainly due, I guess, just a windfall in delinquent specials, I guess. I think it was a little bit in the Elk Creek. They, they purchased a lot of those lots and, and we had kind of a windfall because they didn't want them to go to Sheriff's Cell. So we, so we collected a lot more. I'm not a, I guess we can increase it to 70,000 if we want.
Well, this is.
These are revenues, right?
These are revenues.
These are revenues. Oh, okay.
These are revenues.
It'd be better to be on the conservative.
And that's, and that's where I kind of lean towards. I don't really want to bet on someone paying arrears.
I was just trying to understand what the number was. Okay.
Yeah.
That makes more sense if it's a revenue. Okay, great.
Revenues, yeah, yeah. And then from each fund. The street fund, we're going to end 2018 with a relatively large balance in the street fund, mainly because we did forty-fifth, I guess, sorry, fifty-third street between Rock and Woodlawn out of the capital improvement plan at the end of 2017 and the beginning of 2018. And for me, instead of trying to do a budget amendment in 2018 to repay the CI, or the capital improvement program, let's just transfer that money in 2019 into the capital improvement program where we're doing our street projects anyway. We only collect about $300,000 in highway and state and, I guess, state and county highway fuel tax and that's all our revenues pretty much that goes in the street fund. That's why you haven't seen a lot of street activity because there's just car fuels, or that tax hasn't changed in a long time and cars are way more fuel efficient, so it doesn't keep up with the cost of maintaining roads or building new roads. So that's why we've been trying to pump it up with general fund money. But as said before, I want to kind of do priority-based budgeting instead of just throw everything to the streets and do that. Let's, let's judge our priorities off of it. We employed two, on page twenty-three, we employed two employees out of the street fund, both equipment operators. The biggest thing in contractual line is street lighting. We have to pay for the electricity out of the street lights and that's 65,000. So that's a good chunk of where we're going to spend it. Other things like snow and ice removal. We've been very fortunate the last few years on not having to remove a lot of snow and ice, but we kind of still have to budget for some of the larger snow years, just in case we hit one.
I mean, that's if we can have a winter again one of these days.
Yeah.
It'll happen.
Page twenty-four, which is just basically showing you where the transfers are coming out and the little debt that the street fund does have, we'll pay. If we're good with the street, we can go to the water fund. Water fund, I tend to conservatively estimate our water sales collected. I take 3% from 2017 actual. I, I imagine it will grow, or will grow a little harder than that, but I don't really want to bet against dry and wet, wet years. I'd rather bet and what's proven as far as actual numbers. And I know the 3% because that, we've been growing at a faster rate than three.
Is that based upon the growth of, more rooftops?
More rooftops and also there's a standing, standing, our rates increase 3% a year until we adjust that every year for, in the code, so.
Can we put a freeze on that for one year?
Financially speaking, I, and I think we're going to address that in the next page with my recommendation for some of the expenditures out of this fund.
Why do we have a trash admin fee?
Because our utility clerk, that's a revenue, remember, so the solid waste will pay an admin fee to pay for the clerk that does all the work. So if someone comes and signs up a new bill, they have to, it takes time for us to contact.
Right, okay.
Waste management.
It looks like we are beginning fund balance continues to rise in that water fund year over year. So we're profitable there.
And, and that's something that's a big change and I'll get into it right now, is in 2012, we were, 2013, we were in, we, we were in jeopardy of breaking some bond covenants so that our fund balance was so low. So we had a professional study done that said you need to set your rates here, here and here and you'll actually, you know, become profitable or be able to, you know, run a proper utility. So the council at the time actually did it and now we're seeing that we're actually able to fund what's needed out of this fund. And you'll see that in the next page. With that said, I, I think in 2017, that expert, that expert rate setting opinion kind of ended with just raise everybody's rates a certain level every year. I think we can probably take the opportunity because you do see there's a little bit of a fund balance to use. I have, I, I think that study in 2013 is around 30,000. I, I put that in both funds to maybe do, to do a rate study in 2019 to figure out where we're at and where we need to be to judge a lot of this thing. Yes, to do your point, Betty, you guys can do anything you want. I would feel comfortable with seeing what the experts have to say and what our rates should be to avoid maybe the scare of maybe we don't have enough money to go forward. I'm really excited to be able to transfer some money to the equipment replacement plan for utilities. That, that's, that's another expenditure I have coming out of here as we talked about before. The other thing I had coming out, and we're on page twenty. Six. Our motto is city of the future with respect to its past. I think we've respected the past long enough on our utility billing, online capabilities. Right now, you can pretty much type in your account number and your amount and submit it. What it does on the backend, you guys wouldn't believe, is we have to print off that, that payment, create a slip, enter that slip into our system and then wait for it to clear and then make sure it clears, all in one transaction. What I'm proposing is put forth.
So 1997.
Oh, my gosh. So what I, what I want to do is, and I did some print offs, but it's really customer service friendly. Just like every other bill you have, you can, you can research your, and I only made four copies, so you can spin around. But it's a new utility billing interface that goes online and it connects to our system so that when you make an online, there's only four of them, so you might pass them around. So when someone makes, they'll have their own online account and they can see their water usage, they can see everything, like every other bill you have, Westar, everything, but it'll be Bel Air Water. And the big benefit on this is on my side, my staff's side is if you make a payment, it automatically updates our system and we don't have to even touch it, which is beautiful. And, and really, that's all, what you see, 3,000, that's all upfront cost. I think it's $300 to continue that service. It's just to get the software to talk. It costs 1,500 and then to implement the software is another 1,500, but the $300 would be the only cost after we set it up. So that's kind of what my vision is for, at least in, I don't know how many calls it'll alleviate to our office saying what, you know, my, what I do last month versus this month, because a lot of people don't keep their utility bill for month to month.
My question is, I appreciate the improvement of the interface to get the payment posted and get that efficiency. But Westar gives us this stuff and I couldn't care less. I mean, I, I never look at it. I just don't.
I like mine every month.
I do too.
I like mine every month, just out of curiosity.
I want to make sure it didn't go up.
Well, I look on our current utility statement, it shows us this year versus last year.
Right.
And I look at that. The question I have is, that sounds like it would be a major efficiency from a payment processing perspective.
I get that, yeah.
So would that allow us to reduce that position to a part-time position? Or use the remaining capacity from that person to fill another part-time position that we have so we could actually recognize the efficiency that we would be gaining?
Desmond, you come on your day off and you set the water department with that girl and watch what she does.
Just asking.
From 7:30 until 5:30.
How much of a person's job is it to do that?
It's bad.
It's, it's three people's jobs and probably could be four.
Right.
I, I can, I can do the efficiencies by other stuff we can get done that we're not currently doing because we're worried about processing payments. That's my biggest thing is I got, almost six of my employees have slashes. And so Stacy Cook is our city clerk and she updates all the, all our back scanning and all, every file. And she does an amazing job, but she was a frontline worker for seven years and I've had some turnover. So she stepped in and really trained everybody, you know, really did all that work. So, so.
And I, I don't want to at all say that, you know, people aren't doing a next job.
No, no, I didn't take it that way.
There's not a lot of work, but, you know, if we're going to implement something that gains us an efficiency, I want to understand how we can monetize that efficiency because if we gain an efficiency, but it doesn't actually gain us anything, then how do you offset that expense?
Well, I just go back to the fact that we by far have the smallest staff.
That's right.
Any other city, so just the fact that you would save them some time there, because I said they'll find, I can almost guarantee they'll find something.
I'm a real numbers guy. I'll, I'll find a good system for you and I'll, I'll try to, I'll try to figure one out the way they do it as far as efficiency goes.
I don't know how they do it. It's all I can do to keep up with the water.
Yeah, or. I've been up here for nights, it's seven, seven thirty, a couple years.
And helping us understand the things that aren't currently getting done because we're focused on those things is the other thing that I would be interested in.
My, my biggest priority right now is, so I have one, city, Chris is our city treasurer and she does all normal city treasurer stuff, plus AP clerk, plus payroll, plus, you know. So her days are 100% full. I'm hoping to bring the front desk clerk, kind of part-time front desk, part-time helping Chris do some scanning and some, trying to get her involved in some AP work as well. So a lot of that will happen and that's what I was alluding to. I think I'll show you the efficiencies we'll have. And it's mainly making sure.
And we can discuss that one.
Exactly.
And you alluded to something here and it's a little different subject, but you said you're doing payroll or we're doing, doing the payroll here and all the HR stuff is being done here. Have you ever looked at outsourcing that HR?
It's going to cost.
Does it cost?
Oh, yeah.
What I hear is that it's actually cheap, but I don't know that. I've never seen numbers on it, so I can't say.
Well, and I'm curious, when you say we're doing payroll, we're probably using a payroll system that somebody provides to do that or are we doing it all manually ourselves?
We have paper timesheets, yeah.
They use a computer to do it.
We use computer, oh, so yeah, we have a payroll module that we just plug in hours, calculates everything, yeah.
We're not filling out forms, just sending.
No, 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 we're not, we're not doing. We, I, we look for efficiencies every day and that's, that's really Ty's calling card is let's hire someone that can do three jobs instead of just one, so.
Yeah, it's a good model and I, we have a low staff count, I think, for a city of our size. I know the people that are here do a lot and I think that that's fantastic. I just want to make sure that we continue to operate in a lean model and capture the efficiencies that we can.
And something like this, I mean, especially, I mean, personally speaking, I, I mean, I'm auto-paying paperless for everything. We just look at my online banking, oh, yeah, that came out today.
I've had the opportunity to serve in the utility desk for the last month or two.
I like that.
And I learned a lot on.
I saw you up there.
Everyday, everyday questions we get answered and.
I came in to pay my water bill and he said, Betty, don't you want to come back to work? No.
Yeah, I definitely am for improving this, this system.
I like that.
I think we have to do it.
The other big thing to point to is, and we alluded to at the beginning, was CCUAs 2004 bond would be paid off in 2018, which is about $70,000 in savings and I realize that in this budget. The, the other thing is really the water treatment maintenance slide increase. I think the CCU A budget is about 280,000, but I always go a little more because you never know if they, what, what they change. But I think it's final now, but that, that's just me being a procrastinator, or not procrastinator, a pessimist. Water purchases might go down in 2019. I'm just not 100% sure on it right now. So I want to kind of see how we perform under our new agreement and if it gets passed, you know, how much that's actually going to save us. I anticipate it's going to be quite a bit actually because we can cut off the water from Wichita and start using all of CCUAs instead of, because we lowered that take-or-pay amount. However, I didn't want to realize it before we, I didn't want to guess before we realized it, so.
I really like seeing extra expenses, I guess, or extra budget amounts for fire hydrant replacements. I'm assuming that's the 185,000 dollar line item down there at the bottom.
Yeah, so.
Does that take care of all of them that need to be replaced in the city?
We could do all with that amount. We, we really boosted that line about 100,000, as you see, because we want to start taking care of some of these water main issues that we see popping up. Anne's going to be working on a list of things we want to do with that money in 2019. Fire hydrants, I, off the top of my head, I believe 15 is two of them. They're really expensive to do.
Look at eBay.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, when I saw that we were, you know, having a growing fund balance, that was the first thing that came to my mind is.
Fire hydrants.
the first thing that came to my mind, is not necessarily change our rate structure yet, because I think we've got a lot of infrastructure that we need to spend money on, the fire hydrants, and then the older areas in Bel Air that need some water lines replaced, seems like a great use for some of that money.
And that's what the rate study will do, is they'll look at all our needs and factor that in with what rates, and I think you'll be pretty impressed of, if we go forward with that model.
Do you think, do you think we really need the rate study this year?
In twenty nineteen?
In twenty nineteen?
Yes. One, just because we field tons of questions, and it's really nice to have some power behind that question of why the rates are the way they are. Two, because I would like to see how a professional one's done, so that in the future I can actually do them. I think I can probably put together a pretty accurate one, but I'm, that's not my specialty. I plan to be highly involved with experts, so that we could save some money in the future, and that I can talk about rates a lot more confidently. So those are just a few of my reasons, I'm sure everybody has more reasons, but I really, I field a lot of, I come out and when someone's really upset about the rates, and I have to go through a lot of, basically, the reasons why they are the way they are, and I always lean on a twenty thirteen study, I'd like to rely on a twenty nineteen study.
Is there something that we should put together out of some of our marketing-
Tricia and I are working on one, but again, we got twenty thirteen solid numbers and-
So what's, do you know what the current CCUA debt is?
Yeah, I can look it up.
A lot.
Well, that's part of the reason the water rates are what they are.
It's a big reason, yeah.
Well, unfortunately, they're, they're doing some, need to do some updates over there as well, which you have to bond for, so.
Is everybody here too hard CCUA?
I'm not, I'd be interested in hearing.
That might be a need, let me see if I can-
It's still on, it's not much to do this.
Talk to Randall.
He usually doesn't do it till fall.
Right, yeah, you don't want to go in the summers.
No, you got the storms over there.
And this many. I'll see if we can line one up for this fall. And you'll see, for a new facility, it's, doesn't look that new.
Well, I think it was when Mr. Thornton was there, it wasn't taken care of like Randall does now, or tries to, but-
You guys all know, I mean, the history, at one time, it was supposed to be four cities paying into this, and-
Oh, gosh.
I'm not going to say anymore in the public community, but came just two, so that's-
I remember those days.
Yep, it was never supposed to be us carrying this much of a load, but.
Oh, yeah. I bet you guys haven't had supper yet.
Add a little bit. Is that why we need crackers and junk?
I'll get that number to you, Jim. Six hundred and sixty-eight, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand a year is our debt service for twenty nineteen, yeah.
And there's still, what, like eleven years left on it, or something?
Yeah, it's, they have a debt breakout sheet, it's just it's in tabs, and I don't want to say something to you right now that might be wrong.
Yeah, when you, when you get it, that's great. All right, appreciate it.
One more question on the water system maintenance and repair line. Do we feel like that's enough, has Ann already kind of contributed to that number, to make sure we feel like that's enough for a year? I know in the previous conversations we've had, that there's been a lot that needs to happen to keep our water system reliable, and since we do have-
No more mop heads.
Since we do have, you know, a bond balance there, I'm wondering if we're allocating enough to those repairs.
I think it's one of those structural, let's structurally reduce the ending balance of our water fund. I, I'm not com, I don't know what, CCUA have anything coming up on the water side? I know the wastewater it is, I'm just trying to-
I don't think next year, but I think in the, yeah, in the near future.
And that's what I'm a little worried about, is maintaining a higher reserve in these, because if we get some more debt thrown on us, it doesn't affect our, you know, we can maybe make a payment or so. We can, I did talk to Ann, and a lot of this is covering if, if the worst case happens, and what we do is around, around this time, or maybe next month, we'll sit down and say, hey, we haven't had a water main break yet this year, let's do a few projects and that kind of thing, is it's-
You better save the money, because as soon as you do the project, it's going to break.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, adding a hundred thousand dollars to the twenty eighteen number is a really good start, I just want to, it looks like there might be room to do a little bit more there, and so that's why I wanted to ask the question.
And we can add that, we can add an extra hundred thousand to it, it doesn't mean that we have to spend it.
Exactly.
Like Ted says, what we would do is, because obviously, these last seventy-seven, sixty-six, those have been just repairs.
Right.
We've got to replace and-
If we save the projects for more towards the end of the year, then-
Exactly.
-we don't have to spend that if we don't.
All this money's for band-aids.
Exactly. Is everybody okay with that, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make that two eighty-five?
Two eighty-five. With, yeah. And then the rest is just debt service for water expenses?
So this says water system improvement on North and South Towers, but you're saying that's debt service?
Well, it's, yeah, so the water tank guys will come and repaint all your water tank, and inspect it, and clean it, and everything at zero percent interest, for, what is it?
Ten years.
Ten years. So it's basically, yeah, it's a debt service, but at zero percent interest, so that's, it's a maintain of the water, our water tanks, towers, both of them.
And that's a cost per tower.
If you remember, was it like four, five years ago, maybe six now, the South Water Tower by Sunrise got repainted, and then the one up here, I think two years ago, got repainted, and so what we had to do is, we had to, it was, you know, a million dollars to do that, and so what they do is, or it's probably less than that, yeah.
Just for the outside paint?
Yeah.
Wow.
And, so-
Well, they treated it, and it had mold and everything else.
Yeah, so we signed an agreement, basically a ten-year agreement, where they spread that cost out over ten years, and then they do come out every year, and they'll inspect it, sometimes, you know, we have to sterilize it, they'll dump the tank, and then they'll sterilize it, and things like that, check for cracks and things, so it's just a, but in order to do that, you either pay it to have it painted, or spread it out over ten years, and like Ted said, it was zero percent interest, so that's kind of what it is.
It's kind of a maintenance agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah. In the, in the hundred and twenty, twenty seventeen, it's, we signed the contract in twenty sixteen, and basically, they didn't, they don't charge you twenty sixteen until they finish the job, so that, we got kind of double-tapped in twenty seventeen. Okay, let's go to sewer. Sewer's a lot of the same thing as water, they share a lot of expenses, because we'll go, you know, meters and whatnot, what goes through, does the sewer as well, I treat them about the same. One other thing, I will show you, in twenty, in the water fund on the connection fees, we're up thirty-two percent year-to-date on connection fees. That means thirty-two percent more people are coming into our office, just, as a good rule of thumb, how much work we're, we're continuing to do. The sewer fund, anyway, three percent increase from actuals, same reasons as water, and then that's pretty much it. That's another key factor in our utilities, why, if you just look at the sewer, we're pretty much sewer charge dependent. In some cities, they'll sell water back and have some revenue from their water cells and their wells. Bel Air happens to be high, high geographically, and we don't have wells that are very good, anyway, to sell water, so that's why you don't, that's why you kind of see the rates the way they are, because we're a hundred percent sewer charge reliant. We do, in twenty seventeen and eighteen, we're doing some sewer testing and trying to address some of these sewer needs, much like the water fund, the sewer fund had a little extra reserves in twenty seventeen, so we went forward with water, wastewater systems, repair and maintenance, we increased that from, you know, fifty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand, to try to address some needs that we have in old Bel Air, and we're continuing that trend in twenty nineteen. Again, the online billing interface and the water study, those would be shared from water and sewer funds. We saved fifty thousand dollars for the two thousand and four CCUA bond payoff, you know, of the sewer fund.
We've heard Ann talk to us about doing some projects to line some of the sewer lines, the hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item that's planned there, does that specifically include the line item for doing any of those projects?
I don't think so. Much like the sewer, if you want to add another hundred, we can, we can add that and address that and talk to Ann some more.
What do you guys think about that?
Sounded like that was a-
Sounded like-
-high priority thing, that you can't afford to miss on something like that.
Didn't sound super optional, she presented it to us.
In department meetings with one-on-one, they throw a lot at you at once, so.
I don't know what the right number is for that.
We could, we could increase it to two fifty, and then talk to her, make sure she's comfortable with that, and then next month.
I like that a lot.
Exactly.
We're still discussing, so, yeah, let's do that and see where we are, because we need, you know, one of the things, I think we said in one of the workshops, it would be nice if we could get a number of what would take to maintain, not to improve, but just to maintain our infrastructure, so that we know that we always have a budget there for that, and I don't know where we are on getting that done, but.
I think she's working on it.
I think we got a number for the streets on that.
Yeah.
We haven't done that for water and sewer.
It's a pretty big undertaking if I, for Ann, anyway. It's a lot of different projects, but I know, I know it's muchly needed, because I agree with you, in the finance office, I'd love to see something like that, but I know how much time it takes.
Well, we want to make sure we're funding it adequately enough that we're getting ahead of the game, not sticking in the fall behind, without knowing what it would take to maintain, you don't know if we're falling behind.
We don't know what the deterioration cost is every year.
Right.
We're down the stretch now, guys.
Solid waste and stormwater?
Solid waste, stormwater, pretty much revenue in, revenue, expense out, trash fees collected, and then we pay solid, solid, or waste connections our, our fee, and then what's left over, we transfer it for street improvements, because garbage trucks tear up streets, pretty simple. Stormwater, we're still continuing to build some reserves in that, we're slowly trying to, you know, clear some trees out of ditches, different things like, different issues like that. We're really wanting to get enough money for, you know, maybe a trip seven, or some kind of study that we can evaluate how much we need. We might look at, commercial fees, right now, we're, we're kind of just doing straight fee, a lot of cities around our area charges per square footage of your rooftop, I would like to work on that over the next year, to try to figure out the most equitable way to charge a business versus a house, you know, there's a big difference between that, and I don't think our fees accurately reflect that, that type of difference.
The trip seven thing, the discussions we had earlier with the engineers on Woodline, the firm that we think we're going to go with says, they, they're not promising, but they said some of their designs may resolve some of that trip seven problem. May not be everything, we don't know. It's still, there's, the design work hasn't been done, the study hasn't been completed, okay? So don't anybody get their hopes up there, okay? But they're looking at that.
Page thirty-three, land bank. This one's a very important one, we don't have any revenue to pay for the specials, but now that we have an ending balance that pays for the specials, it's really just, we just pay a bill, buy it. This one's going to change quite a bit, I hope, but I hope we get a lot more sales through twenty eighteen, so that we can bolster this ending balance, but this is where we're at current year-to-date, eighty-four thousand dollars in sales, which is, which is fine, it just, we'll continue to get more sales, so we don't have to transfer general fund money to the land bank, and that would be the worst-case scenario.
We haven't closed on this property over here yet?
No, next month.
Next month?
So that would dramatically affect this, this budget.
It'll be closed before we finalize our budget.
I hope so, I just don't want to reflect it, no.
Been taking it conservative.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then the remaining three, I never really show, or never really print, but they're our non-budgeted PVC revenues, just so you know. Basically, the land debt gets transferred in from the general, and then we pay the debt service payments out of it, and that's kind of how it goes. I don't really keep an ending balance in there, because there's no need to, there's no requirement to either, so this is me kind of reducing that ending balance, and a lot of that's mainly, and as you notice, we do collect some rental income, about thirty-four thousand, thirty-five thousand from all the farmland we have, baling hay across the street, and different things like that, so you can kind of see that. The last thing on my list, if we don't have any questions, is, so what happens in our budget calendar now, this is workshop number two. If you guys are comfortable, really, all we need to do is set a budget limit, or a budget amount, and it's pretty much everything we have, so really, what we can do is, next council meeting, August seventh, I'll update all your guys' changes, get them to you, and then I'll set the budget amount in the state budget, we can approve that budget and set a public hearing. All it does is just sets a public hearing, we need ten days for notice, and then we'll have the public hearing. In between that time, we have another budget workshop, we can make adjustments however we want inside our budget, we just can't go over that amount that I set when we adopt, or when we approve the budget. I guarantee you, we're never going to spend more than what we approved, because we have a large ending balance. If that makes any sense, I'll try to hopefully repeat it for you. Basically, we need to publish how much we're going to spend every year, it's all the money we have, because that's the way the state tells us to. So basically, I'm asking you, are we comfortable enough to approve that type of budget, and then we have another workshop if we need it to make adjustments on August fourteenth, and then August twenty-first, we'll hold the public hearing and adopt the budget, and then I'll submit it to the, I'm sorry, yeah, August twenty-first, we'll hold a public hearing and then adopt the budget.
So you'd be saying that we would spend eight point four million dollars?
Pretty much, yeah. And-
Even though we don't actually plan to spend eight point four million dollars?
Not at all, but that's the way, so-
Because you can never spend more than what you publish.
And this is the technical side, so we set, so we set our mill levy based on expenditures, and I have to spend every penny so that we have the mill levy the way we want it, basically.
That's one of those sad things about, well, the disconnect between state government and lower governments, is that's the way the state statute says, cities, counties have to operate their budgets, is they have to end up with a zero balance, but we all know that you can't. You know, in our own, we have to have some money in our checking account and our savings account, because something could happen, and the city's the same way, and so that's what Ted said.
It's a hundred percent that way. Also, we submit the exact same budget to the state, the city, Wichita does, that the township in western Kansas does, this is the exact same budget format, and that's why they do it, so that the township that has not, doesn't have any professional staff or anything, someone can say, we want to spend this amount of money, and then it sets the mill levy for them, and then that's it. So a lot of these rules are trying to encompass every taxing jurisdiction there is in Kansas, when we don't really need it, but we still do it. Mark Manning in Wichita says he still fills out a state budget form for a five hundred, or five, five-hundred-page budget, so, anyway.
And just so you know, that the dates that Ted just gave, is that's just all legalese, in all the years I've served on city council, mayor, I don't know if it's ever had anybody come to the public hearing, but by law, we have to have it, someone, I guess, can come and say whatever, and then, of course, has to be published, following all, you know, we've talked about some other issues, so.
And, and, yeah.
But I appreciate Ted spending all this time, and kind of see why we didn't have a workshop last month, because they had to get all this together, and when we meet at our next workshop, well, A, if we need one, because I think we kind of went through everything here, but if there's other changes, do it a lot shorter for that, for our finals, we will have one more time. for our final, so we will have one more time to go through this. Does anybody have any questions on the 2019 budget? If we move us along to our next two items, which won't take too long at all.
And if you, between now and whenever, if you do call Ted, come in, call me, come in, we'll be happy to talk. Do you have any specific questions that you got?
I'll run, yeah, I'll run and make copies of that, and really, the third
Why don't you just email it?
Oh, I'll just email it.
Save paper, so we're saving money.
Always. Appreciate your hard work, Ted.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
No problem.
And, yeah, we're a little, I got a few, a few little short staffs, so I appreciate your guys' patience with me and moving this back, but always fun.
No problem, sir. I appreciate the discussion we had, too. So I'm going to move us along to item two.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I propose we take a break before we move on.
A second.
Go. Go forth and take home, come back. Let's go. Talking like 10 minutes.
Straight to legs.
No, I can sit around.
Like riding in a car for two hours.
My daughter's asleep, and Beckett's probably asleep, too, so that's why I picked up. I'm getting better, aren't I, Mayor? I like it slowly but surely. I told Ty, I remember my first line, I think I had 17 handouts.
The other thing is, I'm pretty good. I feel like Mayor pretty
She was a therapist. I don't want to live there. She's going to fly into Kansas City. My birthday is 14th, Brian and Kendra's wedding anniversary.
They all said? All right, we're going to
Well, I didn't, but
Well, I didn't, but
I gave him the first to everybody's that had been attending the meetings, and he just sent off everybody.
Okay, but if you didn't get it, let me know.
Well, I'll log on here real quick. This thing going, and I'll go see if the restrooms are available. So I saw everybody head out, I said, oh, they're all filled.
Well, I'm ready to go to Bronson and get a hamburger.
You haven't had supper yet?
No.
Oh.
I haven't either.
You had neither? I bet you missed your kids.
Yes, of course I do.
You got home Sunday?
I did.
Oh.
It was a nice driving day Sunday.
And they're not here, though, right? They're still
They're still at the farm.
Yeah, and they'll be home?
They're coming home Friday.
Right, okay. So you're really home by yourself?
Your in-laws are coming, bringing them home?
Yep.
Wow. That'll be cool. Yeah, I thought he was out there cutting the corn.
Oh, it's vacation, I ain't working on vacation.
Of course, I had him mixed up. I thought he was going, I thought he said he was going to Iowa instead. And then he probably thought, ooh, she's nuts.
All right. Looks the same.
Yeah, it does.
Cornfields.
Yep, we have a lot of corn.
Did you ever get my voice fell back? When I called back, I'm like, you're on John Deere somewhere, aren't you?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You guys have to get up and go to work in the morning.
7:30.
That's our 7:00 AM breakfast making.
Probably Mayor's going to Topeka.
Nope, I was there yesterday. Not, yeah. Thing I said, and when I spend four and a half hours in the car twice a week.
Which conference is that? In Kansas City or Wichita this year?
What?
Forgot to ask.
OKM Conference, League?
OKM, the league meeting is in Overland Park, Topeka.
Topeka this year? So it'd be in Wichita in 2019?
No, it was in Wichita last year.
Oh, so it's
That's right, yeah. I think it would be Topeka and Overland Park.
I budgeted for it being that way.
Topeka and then Overland Park. It's on the 6th, 7th, and 8th.
On what month?
October.
That's right.
Last year, we had it in September down at that nasty
I'm already in Topeka, October 4th and 5th, so I had to stay there.
Yeah.
So, all right. Just move along. The next item is the, and I only need about half the time that Ted took.
You had what?
So, yeah, the 2018 holiday schedule is something that Betty brought up, and just asked, Ty, do you want to kind of let us know what it is that we've done in the past and what we did this year? And Alex came about because when you have Christmas and New Year's in the middle of the week.
Yeah. So obviously, Tuesday, the 25th, and Tuesday, January 1st are closed. Those are holidays. Then our personnel policy also allows for council, at your discretion, to give another day off in that time period between Christmas and New Year's. So obviously, I think our, the staff's preference would be Monday, the 24th, which is Christmas Eve. Typically, Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve are pretty slow days anyway. People aren't coming in to do any kind of work with the city, they're on vacation doing those types of things. So I guess our request would be that that council-selected day be on Christmas Eve. In the past, what council's also done is, because we don't give cash bonuses or ham or turkey or anything like that, council has given staff an extra day off in lieu of cash or something like that. So, and again, that's up to the council to decide if it's something you'd like to do and what day, those types of things. And I think Betty's got some suggestions, so.
And a good thing about talking about now
Mayor needs to go puggies here when I get there.
Well, is, you know, let's say if we do do Monday, December 24th and 25th, and we do Monday, December 31st, and, you know, Tuesday, January 1st, we publish it plenty in advance for those are about the slowest days here, so.
Okay, you ready?
Go for it.
Being we only have a half a day on Friday, the 21st, and a half a day on Friday, the 28th, I'd like to add also the 20, half a day on the 21st, the 24th, and the 25th, a half a day on the 28th, the 31st, and the 1st. I think our employees deserve that. I did ask questions that, how many people come in on the half Fridays? And in December and January, you're not going to have anybody come in on those Fridays because they're going to get their permits and everything they need. And I think last year, they went ahead and if somebody's hot water tank went out or their furnace or whatever, didn't Keith, didn't they go ahead, the plumbers and electrical people go ahead and put it in and then came in on the next opening day and got their permit? They're pretty faithful about that. Not too many people would do that. But I thought if some of the employees wanted to travel, they could have, they'd have that Friday off, come back on the 26th for Christmas, have Friday off on the 28th, and get ready for their parties the 31st and 1st.
So it's basically an additional day off one?
Yeah. And being, these employees work hard, I think they really deserve it. And that way, and I'd like also all the departments, except the police department in the camp, and somebody has to be on standby for emergencies for water, but they've always worked those out themselves. And then that way, the rec center knows to tell the people ahead of time to close, that they're closing because those people get off also.
But I don't know if the rec center wants to be closed.
Pardon?
I don't know if the rec center wants to be closed.
I don't care what they want. We want to tell them to close so their employees can be off.
I just know last year, we did, and they said, because they had some employees who wanted to work and because they had stuff that was booked, I just
Well, now it's early enough that they, they'll know not to book.
Maybe the wise thing to do for the rec center is ask them, because there may be issues within the rec center that makes sense that they're open those days, and maybe it makes more sense to give them a different day.
That's what I'm wondering for, instead of picking a bonus day for everyone and having the city offices closed additional days, I get concerned when we have that many days in a row
Yeah, well, I open Wednesday, Thursday, two weeks in a row.
Facilities closed, perhaps that extra day that we award as a bonus should be a discretionary day that can be worked out with supervisors.
Kind of like a floating holiday, they can
That way, you can manage having enough staff here.
Most of them take vacation anyway.
People that aren't going to travel could be here, people that are, could not.
Because there isn't going to be anybody come in.
So right now, we're closed on Tuesday, the 25th, and Tuesday, the 1st. We need to give them, by contract or whatever it's called, another day. Do we want to give Monday, the 24th, or Monday, the 31st? Then if we're going to do a discretionary.
Oh, I'm
Or are you wanting to do both?
I thought, I thought
The 24th and 31st?
I thought the discretionary one was, I thought we were required to do one on the 24th or the 26th, and one on the 31st or the 2nd.
No, we're required to do one on the 25th and the 1st.
Okay.
Plus one additional day.
So we're not required to do the 31st? But, or the 24th, but we could do
We could. And it'd make a lot of sense to me to be closed for those two days.
It makes a lot of sense to be closed.
And that gives the staff a bonus day, keeps us
Yeah.
Open for three days those weeks.
The only question, again, does that make sense with the rec center? You know, and I just don't know. You know, sometimes there's a marketing issue here that we're just not aware of.
Practices and stuff like that.
Right, yeah, I don't know.
We can work that out with the rec center. Like you said, if they do have practices, then we can, they'll work it out amongst themselves.
You know what'll happen? They'll make their part-time people go in and work, so they'll be paid.
Okay, so just make sure, so
You might be right.
Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day.
Yeah, I like that, yeah.
We give them an extra day. And again, I'll tell you, and I, and I absolutely, I hear what you're saying, Betty, about, yeah, a lot of people don't come in, but I'll be honest with you, at my office, when it's that slow week, I get the filing that I've been telling myself for 12 months I was going to get done, done, and the emails that I was going to respond for the last 10 months have done.
You need to get productive and keep it up. I just think they need to get the extra time off.
Is that your recommendation?
Will this come, this will be on the next agenda?
Yes, yeah, those would be, you know, I think employees would appreciate the most, and those would be the slowest days, those eve days.
And we are giving them an extra day.
Yeah.
Oh, doggone, I tried, guys.
Is that something we have to
Yeah, I'll put it on the agenda, under consent, agenda.
We really appreciate the 31st, the finance office does anyway, because nobody's in here spending money.
Yeah, then you'll
Nobody's spending money, we can close out the books.
I mean, they don't want to come in.
I want to come in on the 31st.
Yeah, I need, I need to really pay it, make a big payment because I need to get it off my taxes.
I've only got change.
Penny, right?
Yeah. You'd be surprised how fast we work when, that Friday before, how, we might close it out then, actually.
All right, next item, on the city council meeting agenda, as you know, we open with a, I ask people to bow their heads in a moment of silent prayer. This was an item that I, actually, former council member Peggy O'Donnell and I brought up about a year and a half ago, and the council that time wanted to keep it that way. We had suggested inviting in members of the clergy of all faiths, and I want to make that clear. I love Jesus and I'm a Christian, but I know not everybody shares that exact faith, and, but do want to open it up to all faiths of, just to come in, and there need to be some guidelines, obviously. You know, they can't come in here and preach to us or give agendas, but, you know, blessing or something, you know, just open up with a prayer. And then Councilmember Benage and I were talking, I think sometime last week, and he brought up that he'd like to do this, and I said, okay, good, because it was something that, like I said, we tried a couple of years ago, and it would just be, we're one of the very, very, there are very, very, very few municipalities in the state of Kansas that don't have clergies come and offer a prayer or a blessing at the beginning of the meetings. I know City Wichita does it, Central County does it, Andover does it, Clark City does it. So, doesn't mean we have to, we can stay with the current, current way, and at the same time, we'd also on days that clergy doesn't sign up, we would revert to the silent prayer. But that was something, again, Councilmember Benage, if you want to add anything to that, he brought it up, and I'd like to do that, like I said, we could, there's a number of churches right here in Bel Air, there's a number of religions and faiths represented in Bel Air, so.
This is going to be Bel Air only?
We, and I, one of my suggestions was you could make it only churches within the civic limits of Bel Air, or you could set a boundary someplace that
Or clergy that live in
clergy that live, I would like to.
You could do that. I actually know two, I'm sorry?
That live or preach in Bel Air.
Yeah, you could, you could do that. I mean, you set up how guidelines you want, but don't limit to faith. I mean, Muslims want to come in and say a prayer, that's fine. You know, the faithiest want to, that would be fine, too. I don't know what they would have to say, but okay, that would be fine, open it up to them. But, you know, do something like limited to three minutes so that they're not pringing and rambling. I do have two priests from the Churches of Resurrection in Bel Air, because there are two Churches of the Resurrection in Bel Air, who have both said they would be interested in participating in this. The one just moved here from Augusta, he said he did it in Augusta, and he only had to do it about once a year. That's how many clergy they had volunteering to there to do it. So.
And we also have two churches right on 37th Street, just a hair away from that.
Right. So, yeah, you could say the boundary is K-96.
Yeah, maybe within a, something, that's something, Ty, and I can come up with
Right, you can come up with some rule there. But I think you need to have some rule there so that you're not, it's not open up to somebody, you know, way out in the sixth and
My other thing with that is I don't want it to become an issue where staff spends a lot of time recruiting and calling, and we need someone to fill this meeting. I would like to keep it somewhat, get the word out publicly, and, you know, they can call City Hall and sign up, here's the meetings that are available, and if we don't have one that signs up, we open with a moment of silence and we plow through, and we have someone there, we recognize him or her. That's just my thinking.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in favor of this change. I think that it is important to establish a couple of boundaries, like Councilman Benage established. You know, our US Congress, the Kansas State House, Sedgeup County, Wichita, they all open with invitations to prayer by a clergy. I think that one of the things we need to do is perhaps set up our procedure so that there are formal invitations sent out to, like, so if our boundary were to be the physical borders of Bel Air, clergy must be something that's defined, right, by, it's, the state ordains and recognizes churches and synagogues and whatever else. Obviously, this would be open to any faith or, and seems like it would be a good idea to set up a process where we would send out formal invitations to all of the churches or synagogues or whatever, or within the city, say, hey, we're going to do this, would you like to I think that one of the things we need to do is perhaps set up our procedures, so that there are formal invitations sent out to, like, so if our boundary were to be the physical borders of Bel Air, clergy must be something that's defined, right, by its, the state ordains and recognizes churches and synagogues, and whatever else, obviously, this would be open to any faith, or, and seems like it would be a good idea to set up a process where we would send out formal invitations to all of the churches or synagogues, or whatever, or within the city, say, "Hey, we're gonna do this, would you like to participate?" And we actually, we would create a list, and it would be like a first-come, first-served basis. So we generate a list for all the meetings, it would be a schedule for the year, right? Or two years, or whatever we wanna set, right? It would be, so it would be a clear, it's open to all clergy within the boundary that are interested, first-come, first-served, sign up on the list, and then for each meeting, the clergy assigned to that meeting would have, you know, we'd set, we'd probably need to set a time limit and some guidelines of explanations of.
Yeah, don't make me say stop.
It's not a, it's not a twenty-minute sermon time, it's an opening prayer, so we can set some basic.
Yeah, we're not having long calls, we're not having.
We can set expectations for what that is, and, you know, I think it's important to keep it as open and kind of free as possible. And the other thing is, what we can talk about is maybe what we would do for contingencies if there, if the clergy doesn't show up that's on the list, what would we do? Or if nobody signs up.
Right.
You know, do we wanna just continue with the silent prayer, or would we wanna open it to anybody that's in the room? If someone would.
I don't want anyone in the room, that's, we can get in trouble there.
Well, I'm just saying, like, you know, it's a, in terms of being open, is that something we wanna look at? I think, I think it's worth, well, I think it's worth having a discussion about what options we wanna have.
Yeah.
For, you know, it's a hierarchy of, if a clergy is absent, then do we wanna look at other options? Or just, you know, keep the silent prayer as the default if that doesn't take place?
Well, I'll write up something kinda simple and bring that up, maybe another workshop, and if we're okay with it, we'll move forward with it, and hopefully, we can start for the year end, I hope on that, so.
Might also wanna consider putting something in our guidelines about how often a given clergy member can do it. I don't know if we have a thought about that.
You may have to have miss fill-ins.
Yeah, I don't know if we'd want, you know, the same person, you know, every quarter, or, I wouldn't want to say once a year, or something, I don't know.
Are you afraid to get tired of somebody?
I will tell you that we have done this in the past, and we were over in the, over on the building in Auburn. Well, it was left up to staff, because this minister didn't come, didn't show up. Betty, will you go call him, see where he is? Well, if they have an emergency or a sick call.
Right.
You're just gonna be out of luck.
That's where our procedure can fill in.
You're gonna have that happen.
Keep it simple.
Sure.
If for some reason, if something happens, they can't show up, we default back. We don't make phone calls, we don't, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
I gather around at seven o'clock, if I see him or her, clergy, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, just sit there, I recognize them if I don't.
And then they wouldn't sign up to come in and do it, so we just, they kinda quit.
Well, let's try it.
It could be different now, it was back in the eighties when we were there.
I agree with what you said about not spending a lot of time trying to facilitate it, I like the idea of advertising it and letting interested clergy sign up personally.
I do think that some clergy, maybe, maybe all clergy, need to have some good advance notice. I know Father Shim told me that he would like to know three months ahead of time, or something like that, 'cause his.
I think it's up to them to call, tell us what date they want.
Right, right, his schedule, he can plan it then, okay? 'Cause he knows when to go.
You want them to do it for the whole month, or just one time?
Just, I think, let's limit it, yeah, one time, yeah. I like what Councilmember Smith said, like, limit it, you have four times a year, so we don't have the same, you know, that way, it doesn't, they can't say the city council's tied to church A B C.
Need to show him the comic strip bulletin a couple of weeks ago.
No, I don't think so.
Under other, I wanted to bring up just a couple of quick items, I know we've been here a long time, but just to.
You better hurry, 'cause I'm.
Mentioned earlier, Councilmember Smith brought up the email that we all received from a lady that had made some FOIA requests, and I've already shut my tablet down, so Jackie, you're here if you wanna add anything, but basically, just wanna let everybody know that the city was right, I mean, we followed all guidelines, we were well within our allotted time responding, and one of the requests couldn't even be fulfilled because it hasn't even been created yet. I have responded to her to say, "Hey, thanks for letting us know about it," and for that, I think Jackie was going to kinda throw her bone and say, "Hey, if you wanna be added to the list, where you get all the agenda packets for that committee, you can be." I mean, I still don't quite get how, you know, at the last council meeting, they got up and said, "Don't do something that we'd already said we're not gonna do," but anyway, you know, that's something else. And just to kinda bring everybody up to date, you know, as of today, Mr. Hoffman has not brought forth a new design for the planning commission to consider, so we're still, it's Zone C1 until he brings something else. We are responsible, I did wanna let everybody know, since we all received that email, and therefore, it's an open record, I can talk about it here, but, yeah, all of our, the accusations that we didn't fulfill it within the allotted timeframe.
One of the concerns that I read in that email was the accessibility of the planning commission agendas and packets, and specifically called out that, you know, our packets online, but it doesn't appear that the planning commission's packet is. I think that that would be great if we did make that more available on our website, is that something that would be easy to do?
Sure, yeah, we can easily do that.
And I know that, you know, sometimes those agendas aren't created weeks in advance, they might be several days in advance, so we might just need to.
Hours.
Hopefully, it's not hours, I think our planning commission probably needs some time to review their packets, so if it is that, soon we need to fix that, I think. But put some verbiage around when people should expect it to be available for the next meeting.
And we do have it where anybody can request to be added to the email list of the committee, so.
Is that something that would require a city code adjustment?
No. I think we just can add it, and it's just another thing in Tristan's social media arsenal. And she has done that, where, you know, planning commission meets tonight, utility advisory committee meets tonight, tree board.
Yeah, she does send up, she sends up.
Yeah, so I mean, it's out there.
Twitter's tweets on it all the time.
But, yeah, we can put the packet online.
And then just for a full disclosure, I did, I think I mentioned earlier, I met just this afternoon for about an hour and a half with the owner of the lot at Forty-Fifth and Rock, and discussed some contacts that I had made at the ICSC conference, and I'm gonna have a conversation with Stephanie Wise at Marlin, and Marlin, with them, so we can get them connected with a couple, so making that public disclosure there. And finally, I'll tell everybody about what happened in our household on July 4th. Most of you know that I am a doggy lover, an animal lover, and at Forty-Fifth and Oliver, around one o'clock, we saw a little dog dart, if you saw, my wife might put it up on Nextdoor on Facebook, dart across Forty-Fifth, dart across Oliver twice, obviously scared, obviously nervous, came up right to me. The only thing he had on him was a rabies, it was obviously someone's pet, he is fresh, had a fresh haircut, he was friendly, he was so excited to see a human and get some water, but he only had a rabies tag. July 4th, the veterinarian clinics are closed, the city hall is closed. Regina, the lady's name, and Bruno was the dog's name, and he and Lucky had a lot of fun that day in our house and turned it into romper room. But, July 5th, at 8:00 AM, I was able to call the veterinarian clinic when it opened, and by 8:30, Regina was basically in my front yard, just beyond ecstatic, she hadn't slept all day, 'cause somehow, she slipped out of the backyard but could not get back in, and she was just worried to death with all the fireworks and the heat, and she was, you know, and there was no way for me to find, and we actually drove her, drove the dog to the emergency veterinarian clinic, see if it had been chipped. I know we require all animals here to be licensed, but I am gonna, I had a conversation with Ty, we have kind of a URL code, and we're gonna, I'm gonna do some research on that, see if we can't start promoting that. I mean, Nextdoor and Facebook was just filled with lost and found pets this past week, and again, so, of course, I encourage everybody to span and neuter and license and have them tagged, but, I mean, it made me realize that my own dog just has a rabies tag on his leash. He's chipped, but I realized, you know, his name had fallen off his collar, so, you know, it would've been the next day, and we had a lot of homeowners there, so I'm also gonna probably have a conversation, hopefully, with a couple veterinarians, and see if we can't start maybe a kind of accounting-wide database for that, because again, it was just that one vet clinic that had that fund, and of course, the city does too, but both are closed on weekends and evenings and holidays, so just wanna let you guys know, that's something I'm gonna be working on as well. And Bruno's home and Lucky's all rested up. Anybody have any other questions or anything else to bring up this evening? All right, I wanna thank Ted, and we will see you all on Tuesday.